Go ahead.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, September 17th, 2020. Commissioners' Court is meeting in special session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Mary F. Nambes and Dario Garcia. Would you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is public comments, and we do have one guest signed up to speak for public comments, Ms. Betsy Keller.
Betsy.
Good morning, Judge.
Would you mind introducing a special guest?
Yes, I just wanted to take a quick moment before we get started. We have Kelly Childress here with us today, and she is our new chief public defender who just started this week. I did not give her a heads up that I was going to be introducing her because I wasn't sure she was going to be here. So Kelly, if you're available, I was just hoping you could come on screen for a moment and so everyone will have a name with a face.
Unfortunately, I am here, and I'm sure you can hear me, but unfortunately, I don't have a webcam.
Oh, my goodness.
Getting that for me, so you're not going to be able to see me. Sorry.
No problem. We're just glad to have you on the team, and thank you so much for joining the county. We're really excited about your tenure.
Well, thank you. Thank you all so much for your confidence in me, and I'm so excited to be here and be working with you all.
Great. Thank you.
Kelly, we look forward. We're very excited having you. We look forward to either seeing you on camera, but more than anything, we'd love to, when the time comes, that we can see each other face to face and be back at the courthouse, and we still have tremendous hope that you're joining an incredible community, not only your county family, but the community of El Paso. I'm very, very confident that you will engage with them and that you will. We've always said to know us is to love us, and I guess you're going to get to know us, and I hope you get to love us. So thank you very much, Kelly, for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Item number four from the regular agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept the full report, the mid- and long-term recommendations from El Paso United COVID-19 Transition Task Force.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Betsy Keller, County Administrator. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce members of the El Paso United COVID-19 Transition Task Force. That's a long title. But over the last several months, after the Commissioners' Court adopted a resolution forming the task force to help advise and guide the county and the city in our responses to COVID-19, this task force has worked diligently to prepare this report for the court's consideration. As you know, Commissioner Pettis was a member of the task force. Recently, you all transferred that appointment to Commissioner Stout. We look forward to continuing to work with the task force as needs arise, but this is their report, including their mid- and long-term recommendations. So I'd like to turn it over to both Doctors Okaranza and Dr. Brennan. We may also have Dr. Lozey join us shortly, but with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Okaranza.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. Dr. Hector Okaranza, Health Authority for the city and the county, and a proud member of the Task Force United COVID-19 Task Force. So I believe we have a presentation for you guys, and we'll put it in in just a second if I can do us a favor.
We do not have the presentation. We didn't see any attachments.
We don't have any attachments.
Oh, it was in the... Let me send it. One moment.
Or actually, let me do this. Hopefully, you can see it.
Yes, we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, now we're coming to you for your consideration for the mid- and long-term recommendations for El Paso United COVID-19 Transition Task Force. It has been a lot of hours of work and dedication and expertise from all the members of the task force, and I have to recognize all the hard work also on Betsy, that kept us all in check, and everybody from the county and the city that worked tirelessly to finally have a product for your consideration. The agenda, we have the recommendations for the mid- and long-term on the four main areas that we had. One is going to be preparedness. The next one was going to be data. The next one is testing and contact tracing, and lastly, communication. Among all these areas, we're going to have certain points and recommendations that we felt that were important to put in this document and that is going to continue helping us transition our community into our new normal, but also keep it in mind that it's going to help us get the community engaged, having all the preventive measures in place so the COVID-19 doesn't spread and doesn't cause more damage in our community. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Brennan, who's going to mention all these points on the different aspects of the mid- and long-term recommendations.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Okaranza, and thank you, Judge, for allowing me to come back today and present the work that we've done. So a couple of weeks ago, we presented on the short-term recommendations. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going back over those. I will point out sort of where the new mid- and long-term recommendations, you know, link into the ones that we had presented as short-term. But as a quick reminder, we had two overarching recommendations to create, the first to create the COVID-specific scorecard, which has been done and is in use, and to implement recommendations in regional cross-sector, public-private collaborative way. And I think you're going to see that theme throughout the entire remainder of the recommendations, really this idea of trying to engage stakeholders and be collaborative across the community and really utilize all the resources that we have. Altogether, now we have 28 recommendations. 10 are new. 10 are the mid- and long-term, and we went over the previous 18 before. So, next slide. And I think we can jump straight to Preparedness Recommendation Number Five. This is the first mid-long-term recommendation and links back into the Preparedness area of the overarching recommendations. This one's to continue to act as a resource for schools as they develop, implement, and revise their COVID-19 health and safety plans. You might remember that was the first recommendation in the short term, which was to advise and develop and disseminate school reopening plans. And this is just a continuation of that. We feel like the schools will continue to have a lot of needs as we go through this school year, and the task force is just recommending we continue to stay engaged with the schools. We continue to have open dialogue and communication, and that we really work on the surveillance related to testing schools and collecting information around transmission of disease if it should occur within the school buildings themselves. Next. The Preparedness Recommendation Number Six is tied directly to the short-term recommendation, which was to initiate a process to develop a model and strategic plan. And this one is just to continue that. So we were saying in the short term, could you please start a plan, and then recommendation number six is to develop that plan out further, to have strategic plans for future public health emergencies. What is it that we can do now to prepare ourselves for the next thing that is coming? Or what can we do to make sure that we're prepared for sort of the new normal of COVID, but then something else comes along, as we've been seeing across the country, hurricanes, tornadoes, things, life continues on, and we have to be prepared sort of for the magnitude and multitude of these things as they come our way. So really just coming back to that, that piece of we want to be prepared moving forward, and we want to have that plan in place, and we want to sort of evaluate what we've done previously and learn from it and iterate from it and build from it. And Dr. Okaranza, feel free to chime in at any point if you want to add something to what I've said.
Definitely. No problem. I'm here.
Okay. We might have skipped one. It was there, Preparedness Number Seven.
I'm sorry. There we go. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. So this recommendation really comes from the passion that the task force has around the health of El Paso and the surrounding area, really. How do we make sure that the community is at a level of health in which they can best tolerate anything that sort of comes our way? And I think everywhere in the country, we've really had that reinforced, that comorbidities impact us severely when infectious diseases or new and novel viruses come into our community. So how can we invest in our population and really research how to create behavior change across the spectrum of health issues? You know, how can we best partner with the other organizations within our community, be it academic or, you know, other community-based organizations that are already working on this on a day-to-day basis? And the task force is really just saying we want to continue to invest in this, and we would recommend that the community do so because we think long-term health really has an important role to play in the resilience of our community.
And one thing to emphasize is the collaboration that has to be among different institutions and the cross-sector collaboration, again, in where we're going to be utilizing the expertise of many institutions, as Dr. Brennan said. And that's one of the foundations of all the recommendations that we have given as part of the task force. Having to bring the expertise to the table and having the collaboration between many institutions is going to make us stronger. And that's going to be not just in the preparedness, but in many other areas as well.
Recommendation Three, out of data, is pretty simple. It's simply to invest in ongoing COVID-19 epidemiological research and surveillance. So continuing that as we move through this, looking at antibody response, reinfection rates, community transmission, just really trying to stay on top of that data and communicating it out to our partners with, you know, the simplicity of that recommendation and one that I know is planned and is happening. Next slide. Testing and contact tracing. So we are at recommendation number six here, which is to expand passive disease surveillance and existing syndromic surveillance methods. So for those who might know, syndromic surveillance might be things like knowing what chief complaints are coming into our emergency departments or what kinds of drug sales are happening at our pharmacies. Is there an increase in thermometer sales? Those sorts of items give us a heads up in the public health community to say there might be something else going on. There might be a surge of flu or a new disease that we need to be aware of. And the recommendation here is just to continue that and to leverage any partnerships with stakeholders in the academic community, again, who might be already doing this type of research and really linking up with those existing systems to see where we might be able to continue to broaden what we're already doing. Dr. Okaranza, did you want to add anything to that one?
Well, we, at the Department of Public Health, we are doing some syndromic surveillance, and we have the plans to also enhance the influenza-like illness syndromic surveillance as we did the presentation to Commissioners' Court on Monday. And we are recruiting one of our best stakeholders and partners, which are the schools, who's going, who are going to give us very valuable information in how the children are being absent from in-person school instruction due to influenza-like illness. On the same token, as Dr. Brennan said, the monitor of over-the-counter medications, thermometers, and other indicators that the people start buying before they seek medical attention is also of value because we want to see those indices before it can translate into an increased demand in hospital services or any other complications from this influenza or COVID-like illness.
Thank you. Recommendation Number Seven is about continuing to expand COVID testing throughout the community. That was a very big focus in the initial short-term recommendations. And as you know, as part of the scorecard, really trying to make sure that anybody who wants to be tested can be, that we can process those tests in a pretty timely manner and get the results back to them. Allows us then to do contact tracing quickly. And so this recommendation is just around using the funding that has come our way to expand the laboratory capacity, to continue to leverage those partnerships, create a plan for scalable testing response. So, you know, we might not always need to be functioning at the level that we are now, but how can we go from lower testing needs to higher testing needs pretty quickly as needed in the future? And to help provide publicly available information for clinics and business operators on what tests are validated, where can you get testing supplies, what type of testing supplies should you have, maybe what are costs? I think it's just been a challenge for a lot of local community members, again, across the country, to really know, you know, what tests are out there, and what should I be using? And this is just a recommendation. This part of the recommendation is to try and provide additional information to our stakeholders around that.
And this is particularly important because when we have a massive test program that is carried out not only in the city, but state and nationwide, there's going to be shortages of reagents, collection swaps, or actually the test itself. And by having a plan in place that is going to be rapidly scalable, either up or down, then that's going to give the community that access to testing that is needed in case of another pandemic, another wave, or just the current pandemic as well.
Dr. Okaranza?
So are fine.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes, sir.
I was going to say that, I don't, I know this is unprecedented. It was very difficult. I think my question is more the feedback that I'm getting that there's some implicit situations where testing becomes difficult simply because our community sometimes hesitates to put themselves in a situation where they might have to expose, you know, I've been at a party or I've been in a situation that I shouldn't have been or in contact that I shouldn't have had. And so I'm getting a lot of feedback that individuals are avoiding the testing simply because of putting themselves. And we, you know, we took the tour of of the public health, and we saw the contact tracers, and we talked to the individuals and how difficult it was to engage with the community for contact tracing. So one, I know it's, I'm not focusing so much on the contact tracing because that's the outcome, but on the actual testing, there seems to be some reluctance because of this vulnerability or being exposed, and, you know, pardon the pun, but being exposed to situations that they wouldn't want to expose others that they've been involved in. So I don't know, is there anything that the task force has discussed as to maybe creative ways or ways that people feel more confident that that it's more discreet? I know there's one end that, you know, we want to let people know where a decline in testing, not necessarily because it's not available, but just individuals not testing as much. So have, have you touched on that sort of phenomenon of how do we move forward? Testing to me is one of the critical points that allows us to understand the spread and what's happening in our community, yet I see a little bit of, you know, how, how do we break that barrier where people are willing to get tested? And they are, but some of them are saying, well, I'll self-quarantine myself if I, if I, you know, or instead of testing, or if once I hear I'm, you know, that I'm positive, I'm, you know, I sort of get myself off the radar. So anyway, there's this phenomenon going on and I didn't know if there was any discussion about how to creatively continue engaging our community in the proper testing, especially when we get into November and we have to discern between influenza, COVID, or any other strain of COVID coming at us in November. So anyway, I know it's a long question, but maybe conceptually you can respond to that, either Dr. Brennan or Dr. Ocaranza.
Yes, if I may, and, and actually it's a great question because he covers just the, the pandemic itself. It is, uh, it is very correct, those statements that you were making in, in regards to initially with the fear, everybody wanted to get tested, then everybody knows that, well, if I get tested and if I'm positive, I'm kind of admitting that I, I'm at fault for gathering, I'm at fault for exposing other people, so I'd rather not know, or so the contact tracer wouldn't contact the other people and it's going to place like a scarlet letter on that kind of person. But the task force did think about all this process and, and it's a multidisciplinary approach because we need to have the, the elements ready for people such as testing, we need to have the contact tracers, we need to have the, the other elements that, that are monitoring the situation of the pandemic, and then we need to create change. We need to create behavioral changes on our community that is culturally competent, that is addressing and communicating in such a way that the community will listen to the message and, and kind of make it and take it personally per se. Because if we cannot mirror or send a message that is going to be grabbed by our intended audience, then the message is going to be out in the air and is not, not going to create any behavioral change and is not going to, and it's not going to help us in any way to attack the pandemic in such a way that we're going to be seeing a decrease in cases, we're going to be seeing a decrease in hospitalizations and ultimately decrease in the death rate that we will see with a virus such as this one or any other virus for that matter. So it is, it is something that we as a task force looked in different eyes and we tried to attack in different ways, having all the, all the elements in place to have a proper response and a complete response in such a way.
Thank you, great, great response. And you're right, the, just that holistic approach captures one, something misses, we capture it some other way and, and I think that's the, the best way. I was in a meeting this morning and one of the things I addressed was that the community coming together is going to be very important. It's not what others are doing or what happens, there's things that nobody's going to take into consideration but ourselves. And this doesn't mean, you know, vigilante focus, but it does mean that we as a community help each other to be successful based on what we want and what we need to do here in El Paso. And I think this is part of it, you know, that, that we need to encourage community members to help other community members to be more candid about how to approach and how we get out of this situation. So you, you're absolutely right, I love your response on this sort of holistic approach is really the answer, not one-dimensional.
Definitely, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's really, no, good. I think it's an exceptional point really and one that I know also Dr. Alosia thought a lot about too. And, you know, you're, you're right, there's a phenomenon now of having shame of sort of having a positive test result because you don't want to think that you unknowingly spread it to somebody else that you care about, that, that would be at higher risk for it and so, or that your job could be impacted. I think it really, it does tie in well into the communication recommendations overall too and really thinking through, you know, as we see things like this happening, how do we get out that message through the many different avenues that Dr. Ocaranza was just talking about? You know, one, there's the message around testing and you're, we will keep your information private. And then when you're getting your test results, having that communication piece there about, you know, privacy and that, but it's okay, but this happened, this is something that's happening to people all across the country and we're, we're here to help you. So really, you know, I think that's, that's a piece of what this rec, you know, recommendation number six really is about is to try and continue to effectively communicate with all the target audiences and to think about how they learn, how they ingest information, where they get it from, how can we get it to them in those forums? And really taking a look at what the need is for all of our populations and figuring out the best way to get it, get it into their hands in a, in a timely manner.
Thank you.
So recommendation number eight is along these same lines, which is to provide consistent quality COVID-19 communication resources. The cross-sector collaborative should advise on production of communication resources. This is really about trying to work with our partners again, true, back to sort of that no wrong door philosophy, how can we get our partners to hyperlink to our resources on the city website so that people know where to go, they know where to get that information and we can get it to them in, in sort of a timely manner? And that there's not a lot of different communications going on, but there, that we are trying to provide as much consistency in that communication as possible. Sorry, Dr. O, number nine?
No problem, sorry.
No, so this is the last recommendation here and you will see we do, we have a note on recommendation number nine that we know, we understand, and we understand this for a lot of, for all the recommendations, that the, the city and the county have to take them and really figure out what the timeline looks like for, for you and, and make those decisions. And so while we've set timelines within the document, within our report, that we fully understand that some of these might take longer to fully develop and maybe we can get started with them, but we might not be able to, to complete them. So this one is back to other recommendations that we've seen along the way to provide after-action reports, really for all parts of the response and here specifically around communication, how effective were we at getting communications out, you know, how effective was our strategy? Is there anything that we can learn from that and place into best practices for future issues? Really, how effective was our communication between private and public partners and how could we potentially work with them better? So really around just identifying ways to gauge and sort of quantify the success of our communications across, you know, the past six months and the next six months as we, as we get towards our, our vaccination and, and then trying to communicate everything that would be related to that. Dr. O, anything you want to add to this one?
I'm good, I'm good, you did a great job and, and as mentioned before, all these recommendations have a common goal in regards how we're going to be respond as community and how as community we're going to become stronger and the way that we need to stick together and help one another. This is more of a reassurance and how to lend a helping hand. And basically that's, that's also one of our great, great qualities that we have in El Paso community. We help each other and as a community, we become stronger as, as new challenges come. Then we have this resilience and, and very creative ways to come out of either trouble or, or successes to continue achieving those.
I think Dr. Alosia was able to join the line. If so, Dr. Alosia, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, good morning, everybody, thank you, Dr. Brennan and Dr. Ocaranza, great job as always. And I think for the members, I think it's important to understand that when you tasked us to go forward with this, right? We put this group together, a lot of work, hard work went into it. And so thanks to the, for listening for all the time and dedication, thanks to Betsy, thanks to Dr. Brennan and her team and a host of others, blame it on my mind and not my heart if I forget your name. But I think what's most important is that, Judge, if you remember, about three months ago, we had a conversation about foundational and aspirational, right? The work that the community has put in, the work that the task force has put in, has not just hit the foundational marks, we're now heading towards those aspirational marks, right? Our seven-day rolling percentage is around 5% and actually 4.6 or 4.8 as of yesterday. Our cases per hundred thousand are hovering right around 10, right? Austin is actually having more cases than we are, right? And our infectivity rate is probably below one, looking at a host of other measures on CDC sites. And so the county and the city and our people have put that work in. I think as the task force, we were just making recommendations, hopefully based on science, hopefully based on some scientific consensus, and you've now seen our short, long and medium-term recommendations. We hope that your group can take these back and hopefully really catalyze what we are going to need to do over the long haul. I think it's important as we think about messaging, as both Dr. Brennan and Dr. Ocaranza sort of focused on is, this isn't an event that ends in December. It doesn't end in December 31st because the new year changes, right? And I think even with some of the political challenges that the CDC has had, Dr. Redfield clearly stated yesterday in his briefing that general availability of vaccine is a Q2 to Q3 event. And if it's a Q2 to Q3 event, we have to ensure as a city and a county, as a community, that we continue to be diligent, we continue to do good work, and that's going to rely on messaging and hard work. And so again, thank you for enabling us to do this work. Thank you for allowing us and putting your trust in us to give these recommendations. And thank you very much for all the work that you continue to put in as our elected officials.
No, well, I'd like to thank the, the task force, and I've said it over and over again, that not having that support from professionals and that, you know, there's no politics involved, you're, you're looking at it strictly on the basis of, of the virus and how it acts and how it performs in our community. There's two things that really resonate with me. One of them is that the communication piece, I think we have discovered that, that we're not, we're, we are having a difficult time in communicating because it shifted so fast on us. If you look at the majority of the population that are watching Netflix and streaming and, and they're, all these series that they're looking at, it takes us away from that ability that we used to have. On the other hand, the Hispanic population, the, the Spanish-speaking population has been very engaged in the, in, on television and so our PSAs and our press conferences seems to have engaged them a little bit more. So thank you for looking at these changes. We, we looked at promotoras as another element of having 130-plus promotoras in our community that really could communicate that information that might not be available otherwise. So to me, that was a huge challenge to say, how do we, how do we interact with a community that shifted the way they, they understand things, that shifted how they, they process information? Because being out in the community, I, I see that sometimes that information isn't there. Before, if you had a press conference and we had a lot of people listening and a lot of people would stop what they were doing, that's not so much the case anymore. And so thank you for trying to figure out all these different avenues that we need going forward as we approach the challenges that are coming at us. The second one that I, I believe is really important and it's not that we didn't know it, I think we knew it and I've talked about it, Dr. Ocaranza and myself have really focused on the idea that, that we've uncovered that there's a lot of, of, of health issues that make us more vulnerable than most communities. So whether it's access to insurance or what is it that we need to do, hesitate, you know, just being hesitant to take care of themselves sometimes or, or looking at different venues of, of getting treatments and that, that might not be as, as positive for our community. We've got the clinics, but they're not, they're, they're not like they're being overrun because we have clinics. We're still not getting the right people in and, and the people that, that need that. So shifting that focus not only on addressing the virus, but saying, what is it that we need to do to prevent and to encourage good health? You know, you have some communities like you have in Colorado where health becomes a big part of their culture and I think that's something that we really need to work on. We've looked at, you know, we're going to have that trail all the way from Vinton to, you know, to the other end of the county, we've got trails coming up, but I think we still haven't built the culture of people that will take advantage of those opportunities. So communicating to and creating venues of opportunities for people to be healthier, not only from going to the doctors, but taking care of themselves a little bit better. And, and you're right, Dr. Ocaranza, we have a community that if you engage them properly and you get them involved and they understand the situation, I don't think there's a community anywhere. We saw that with the refugees, how they all came together, we've seen what happened with, with August 3rd, the pandemic, we still haven't, I don't think personally, that we've gotten the traction from the community that we have in other situations. It, because we ask them to go back away from each other into their homes at a community that works together very well when they get united. If you could get them together, we're very good, now we have to learn how do we do that when they're away from each other and they have to independently interact? So I really, you know, I thank you, those two are very close to my heart and that's the proper communication. And, and not only for that, we struggle with census, we struggle with, with people to, to go out and vote. And, and why? Well, we don't reach the, some of the community that we need to reach. So I think that's going to be, from our county, a, a big, huge part of our strategic planning is how do we reach out and, and get the people to know what's happening and what we'd like for them to do? Because if we can do that, I think they'll engage, I don't have any doubt. But if we can't reach them, then it's, it's difficult to get that community to come together as we've seen them in so many, not only this year, last year, but I think throughout the history of El Paso. We come out, sometimes we, we don't get hit as hard from inflation or economy right now is one of the stronger ones in Texas. And so we, we have a lot of a platform to be able to, to engage our community, we just have to figure out how we're going to do that. So once again, I thank you for that. I also want to thank, take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Perez for his work and, and, you know, his dedication with the task force, his passion to want to be there and then the, the way he handled that situation, engaged his, his staff as well. So Commissioner Perez, I really thank you for, for that commitment and that engagement. And Commissioner Stout, I wish you all the best. As we've said over and over, this isn't going to be a, you know, start and stop kind of situation. I've been really pushing hard through Betsy, of course, my best source, because she's an incredible ally for us and, and anything that happens either internally or externally. But the, the task force, hopefully, and this is just my opinion and what I would like to see, is that, that it does stay engaged. I know there's been some discussions about, you know, we're on call, that gets me really nervous, especially as November's coming up. And, and so I really would love the consideration that the task force does have these, these regular meetings and as we go in, because we're going into, and I hate to put it this way, but we're going into a sort of a cave that we don't understand, we don't know what's going to be the interaction, we don't know if the perfect storm is brewing or if we're able to dissipate that, that, that perfect storm of the virus and new virus and, and the influenza. that that perfect storm of the virus and new virus and the influenza and all these things coming together. So very, very hopefully, I love what you guys did and I hope that it continues in the very same way. I thank also for things that we do, for example, anticipating having the campaign on the flu, the flu shot. To me, it's very, industry is very great that we're anticipating. I have seen throughout this whole situation that we've done a lot of things prior to other communities doing them. And that's a lot of thanks to the task force, that we we sort of get ahead of the curve and we do things that are sometimes even are are emulated in other parts of Texas. And so we're in a really good situation. This flu shot, going forward with the flu shot would really, really help whatever possible the task force can do to help us with these campaigns. But it's a very valuable step in the right direction. It's very progressive but very, very assertive step. So once again, I want to thank the task force. So Commissioner Stout, would you like to say a few words?
Thanks, Judge. I just had a, I just had a couple of questions. Thank you, Dr. Okaranza and Dr. Brennan for the presentation. I was just wondering, you know, first of all, what are we, what are we, I mean, looking at or anticipating and what are we discussing in in the context of, you know, a second wave? And and I ask that because, you know, as part of, as part of preparedness, we're starting to see a lull right now. And, you know, in a couple of these recommendations, we talk about an after-action analysis and kind of looking at, you know, what what worked and what didn't work and things like that. And so I wonder if, I mean, are we going to be doing, I mean, are we recommending doing some of that after-action analysis right now as we're in a lull and anticipating a second wave? You know, or is that, is that something that we're going to wait? Are we going to wait until 18 months down the road to actually do something like that?
Well, Commissioner Stout, definitely, we're all expecting a second wave because coronavirus, we know that it's a respiratory virus that circulates more during the winter season. And along with that, there's some other virus, not the COVID, but some other ones. There's influenza, there's RSV. And there's some other respiratory viruses that may mimic the same symptoms, and we do need to be prepared. The same recommendations that we're giving for COVID are going to be helping for the other respiratory viruses. But we need to be alert. We need to be monitoring the situation. And one of the things that we can do is be prepared for the flu. The flu causes thousands of hospitalizations. Many, many of us get sick, lose days of work, lose income because of that. And unfortunately, many people lose their lives due to complications of influenza. So one of the tools that we have to prevent influenza is the vaccine. And that's why we have that campaign in which we're going to be promoting the influenza vaccination. We're going to be promoting the following the same health recommendations and preventive measures. We need to be taking care of each other and we need to send the message in different ways so people can embrace it. People know the usefulness and the effectiveness of getting the vaccine because we're losing faith in the vaccine. And definitely, the after-action report that you mentioned might not be right now in the middle of a pandemic because we're still dealing with that. And it might be later on in the road. Definitely, we might change gears as we see that some things might work better than others. And we will continue striving for improving and doing our best.
I appreciate the the response, Dr. Okaranza. And I just want to, you know, advocate for, you know, not waiting until 18 months down the road to start looking at what we, what worked and what hasn't worked over the last five months or the last six months in anticipation of a second wave, because I feel like we would be doing the community a disservice if we if we don't start looking at that and 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 try to apply some of those, you know, or, you know, some of that, some of the results of that analysis to what the second wave would be, because we don't, you know, we don't want to make the same mistakes if, when we have a second wave. And so I, I mean, I think, I think it's important to have, you know, an overall, I think, after-action analysis done definitely down the road, but I, but I think it's something that needs to be constantly analyzed and constantly looked at and to make sure that we, that we are, you know, doing, learning from our mistakes. And and I mean, we, we need to admit that, you know, maybe we have made some mistakes and we need to learn from those if we have. And so I would just advocate for, for, for doing that instead of, instead of pushing it down the road to to the very end before we start looking at those things. I also wanted to, I'm, go ahead, Doctor. Go ahead, Doctor.
No, no, definitely. And thank you very much and appreciate all that. Definitely, we need to learn from our mistakes and do not trip with the same rock twice, as we say in Spanish. So, but definitely, those things are very dynamic and it's an ongoing process. And definitely, we'll continue doing that kind of quality assurance and and definitely continue communicating that to the community, to you, Judge, Commissioners, the city leadership, and definitely learning from from best practices.
Thank you. And one more, one more question or point. When, on the, on, I think it was the the data recommendation, I think recommendation number three, where you talk about investing more in epidemiological research and surveillance. And I think within, and even within the context of schools, are there, is there, is there any work being done on that? I know that Dr. Handel had brought up a couple of months ago, probably, a proposal to, 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 you know, study, study children now that we're getting back to school and things like that. Or is that, is that something that that's being entertained or what? I know that these are recommendations, but I mean, is there anything being done in that, in that realm, especially when it comes to school? And in the context of we're coming back, kids are coming back to school. I mean, there's some that are already back to face-to-face, and then I believe others are still, are still doing virtual, like EPISD, but just curious about that.
Yes, sir. And definitely, Dr. Handel's study was in consideration. There were, there is also some research being considered by UTEP. But also, there is a very large research project brought up by UT Houston School of Public Health in which they have many campuses across the state, and El Paso is one of them. And they're going to look into the children, but also into the parents and how it's going to change the immunological response if they have been exposed either because of school, if they're because of the family. And that one, that study has been funded by the state and it's ongoing and already passed the IRB process. And it looks really good. So there's many, many options on the table. There's many ways that definitely we will continue to observe and conduct those epidemiological surveillance. And we're going to be gathering a lot of epidemiological information and data.
Great. I appreciate the clarification there. Just one more thing. When it, when it comes to the communication piece, again, I just want to advocate kind of for the same thing as, as, as with the after-action analysis to, you know, to, you know, maybe that's something that we can work on with the city and the county and the health department is, you know, really trying to understand as quickly as possible whether our communication strategy that we've implemented up to this point actually, you know, how well it worked and doing surveys and trying to understand that aspect before we get to a second wave so that we can implement those, that that learning and 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 make sure that we're communicating better as we have a second wave. So thank you very much for, for your time and all of the work that you all are doing. I'm looking forward to to being part of this as we go into the future. And anything that I can do to help, please, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and welcome. It's going to be a great pleasure to be working along with you. And thank you, Commissioner Perez, also for the invaluable work and time that he brought in expertise to our task force as well.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners? Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
That's all. I was just saying, thank you.
This concludes the report. If there's no other questions for Doctors Brennan, Okaranza, or Lozzi, we can close this item. It's no action. Or you can take action to approve or accept the report if you'd like.
Yeah, I move to accept the report.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great Thursday and a great weekend coming up. Thank you. Go ahead, Betsy.
Caesar?
Item number five, receive a presentation and updates on the county's 2020 to 2024 strategic plan.
Judge, Commissioners, this morning, Dr. Lozelli Madrigal is going to give the update for the third quarter on the county's strategic plan. With that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Madrigal.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Dr. Lozelli Madrigal with County Administration. And today, I'm reporting on the third quarter progress of the 2020-2024 strategic plan. Miguel, we're going to be moving between the plan and the PowerPoint presentation. I believe you have the link. The strategic plan you adopted in 2020 targets nine key goals. Lead justice reform, transform economic development, increase tourism, upgrade infrastructure, promote collaboration and engagement, advance community services, value El Paso County family, strengthen financial health, and optimize internal processes. Next slide, please. To tackle the nine goals of the strategic plan, 77 objectives and 189 milestone activities were implemented and identified by county leadership and staff. In terms of levels of the strategic plan, the goals are the outcomes we intend to achieve, and the objectives are the actions that help us achieve the goals. And the milestones are the specific activities that are carried out to accomplish the outcomes of the strategic plan or the goals of the plan. It should be noted that the status of milestone activities for each objective is aggregated upward to provide an overall progress of that goal. The overall progress allows the court and the public to see the progress the county is making towards achievement of the plan. This presentation aims to show you the overall progress made through the third quarter of this fiscal year to advance the court's mission of delivering sound and exceptional public service to the people of El Paso County through judicious, efficient, and responsive government and to conscientious development of ideas that produce, communicate solutions to our community's obligations, challenges, and ever-changing. Next slide, please. Next, I will report on the progress and status made to move forward each of the goals of the strategic plan. The status is a qualitative indicator that helps clearly and easily communicate how the milestone activities that support the objectives and goals of the strategic plan are advancing and performing. The progress represents the percentage of completion towards the achievement of goals of the plan. When we last reported on the progress of the plan in March, at the, at that time, 36% of the strategic plan was achieved. Today, the progress of fulfilling the strategic goal stands at 59%, an increase of 23 percentage points since the second quarter. As illustrated in the donut chart, go ahead.
I apologize. Lozelli, what I would like to point out on this comment that you're making right now to Commissioners Court is, as you all know, earlier this year, all of our departments had to go through a major transition in how they operate, whether they're operating onsite or in a remote method. It's a pretty significant transition that all of our county departments had to go through, whether it was implementing safety measures, whether it was making sure the public had ways to access services online. There, there was so, in my career, I think it was the biggest transition I've ever had to go through so quickly. And I know many of our departments were doing that as well. And so I mention that because to, I really, at that point, just because of the demand of daily expectations and responding to COVID-19, the the strategic plan and all the objectives in it, it was able to continue to move because of our departments who had projects. They continued to focus on those projects while going through one of the most major transitions in work in our, probably our lifetimes. So I want to note that because I'm really proud that departments were able to continue to to move and focus on these things, which we all expect them to continue and to be completed. But it was just significant that during this time, they were able to make sure that these items did not get forgotten or left behind. So I just want to make that point and really give appreciation and kudos to our departments. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Madrigal.
Thank you. The work behind the scenes was incredible. As illustrated in the donut chart, in the third quarter, the overall progress is as follows. In blue are the milestones that have been completed, which stand at 42%. Further, 38% of milestones are on track, as shown in green. There has been some disruptions to the plan, specifically, 6% of milestones experienced some disruption in yellow, and two had major disruption, as illustrated in red. About 2% of the status of milestones is pending, and is shown in gray. Lastly, 9% of milestones have been discontinued and are illustrated in black. Next slide, please. As noted earlier, and by Betsy, the plan is in its first year of implementation. The Gantt chart illustrates the overall progress of each goal. And it's important to note that the strategic plan is only in its third quarter of the first year of five-year implementation, or a 15% time lapse. Further, I'm pleased to report that the department's leadership and staff have moved forward the progress of the plan by over 50%. To be exact, 59% in approximately 15% of the strategic plan's timeline. I'll further elaborate and provide highlights on the progress and the status of each goal in the next few slides. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. To lead justice reform, six objectives and 26 milestones were identified and implemented by staff. As illustrated in the Gantt chart, the progress of achieving goal one is at 87%, which is a 14 percentage point higher than the second quarter progress of 73%. Next slide, please. In terms of status, 77% of milestones have been completed and 12 are on track. There was about 12% disruption reported. For more specificity, please move to the life plan. Thank you. If you go to lead justice reform. Thank you. objectives that have been completed include the creation of strategic plan for solutions identified in the Meadows and the HOK studies, which were presented to the court recently. Another completed objective was receiving the National Association of Counties, NACO, recognition which was received for pre-trial justice modernization, 2015 through 2020, under the criminal justice and public safety category. Milestones that are on track include complete full analysis of JPD courts and provide recommendations and implement and assess the expanding use of automated robocalls. Some disruption was identified in milestone activities related to Some disruption was identified in milestone activities related to Objective Three, which impact the development of adequate, effective, efficient case file management. Specifically, the Public Defender's Office and the county's ITD Department coordinated with Tyler Technologies to convert case chronological data from Activity Manager application to Odyssey Attorney's Manager's time tracking. During testing production, the application experienced extreme slow response times, which Tyler Technologies is reviewing and working on a solution. Another disruption noted was the development and implementation of a plan to expand Gideon's Promise training to all lawyers in the office. Due to COVID-19, the County of El Paso has suspended travel, and Gideon's Promise has indefinitely delayed their 2020 train, the trainer session. The Public Defender's Office will continue to monitor their schedule for opportunities to continue growing the cadre of Gideon's Promise trained lawyers. If we go back to the PowerPoint, and the next slide, please. One more. One more. Thank you. To transform economic development, Goal Two, fifteen objectives and twenty-six milestone activities were identified. Progress towards this goal is at forty-six percent, which is a twofold increase since the second quarter progress. Next slide, please. Thirty-eight percent of milestone activities have been completed, and forty-six percent are on track. Moreover, there was some disruption noted, and one milestone activity was discontinued. For specifics, let's move to the life plan and go under Economic Development, please. Thank you. Back one screen. Yes, thank you. Completed activities under Objective Two and Seven include Economic Development Director working with the Borderplex to create a strategy on business attraction by industry. This included surveying what necessary infrastructure, high-wage industries need for relocation. An outcome of the survey indicated a need for high-speed internet and available office warehouse space. A military-related completed milestone was securing a discount for veterans and service personnel at the county recreational facilities, which was approved by the court in September of 2019. In green, our objectives are on track, including efforts to increase the commercial tax base and fully developing and investing in the Fabin's Airport, which was most recently reviewed by the court. The disruptions noted to the goal are related to COVID-19 and include efforts to support the regional workforce development plan, which affected the student internship program, and due to safety issues, the program has been put on hold for the remainder of fiscal year 2020. Attracting and supporting more options for transit connectivity, direct routes, were also sidetracked, and the Economic Development Department will continue to monitor and face in a post-COVID plan. The milestone that was discontinued is related to fiber optics and cross-listed in Objective Two and Twelve. For efficiency purposes, updates related to fiber optics will be captured only under Objective Two. If we go back to the PowerPoint presentation, and the next slide, please. Thank you. To increase tourism, Goal Three, the court identified ten objectives, and staff implemented twenty milestone activities to achieve this goal. Progress for this goal is at forty-one percent, an increase of fourteen percentage points from the second quarter. Next slide, please. Twenty-five percent of objectives have been completed, and forty percent of milestones are on track. Disruptions were noted, and about twenty-five percent of milestones have been discontinued. To provide you with more detail, let's move to the life plan. Thank you, Miguel. As illustrated in the life plan, two objectives have been completed. Specifically, milestone activities related to Objective Five and Six, which include the Mission Trail Master Plan developed and presented to the court on September twenty-third, 2019. Under Objective Six, adding the holiday lights displayed to attract tourists was also completed. Moreover, and as evidenced in green, the majority of objectives are on track. These objectives include efforts to further historic preservation, including the downtown historic district survey, investing in MOB all-inclusive playground partnerships for Ascarate, Rysenger, and Gallegos Parks. The significant disruptions noted relate to Objective Six, which aimed to increase events, and due to the pandemic, progress on events was sidelined. An example of an event impacted is the marketing and hosting of state regional competitions at the sports park. Several milestones were discontinued due to lack of feasibility, and these projects include collaboration with the city of El Paso, Socorro, and San Elizario, Techstock, and other agencies for utility relocation along Socorro Road. The relocation of utility lines is not a feasible project. Adding river cruises was also discontinued, and rerouting the river to add ivan C to downtown and San Elizario were also discontinued. If we move to the PowerPoint, and the next slide, please. One more. Thank you. To upgrade infrastructure, Goal Four, eight objectives were outlined, and thirty-five milestone activities were implemented. Progress is at sixty percent, an increase of eighteen percentage points from the second quarter. Next slide, please. About thirty-five percent of objectives have been completed, and fifty-one are on track. Disruptions were reported for several of these objectives. Let's move over to the life plan for more details. Objective Five was completed, which supported the development of fiber infrastructure to create a platform for the tech boom, higher incomes, and increased employment. The research conducted indicates that all fiber optic cost is paid by each agency. Further, locations of all new fiber infrastructure is determined by each fiber optic agency, and spaces provided along the roadways, parkway, to underneath sidewalks. Milestones that were on track included milestones under Objective One, which focus on establishing the ability to use a second floor of OME building for department use for rotations, academics, and investigators. As for Dr. Roscon's updates, the OME building lease expires in September, and soon after the expiration of the lease, the planning phase will be implemented. Also on track is activity under Objective Two, which is the coordination and development necessary for interlocal agreements with partner agencies related to the launching of a regional transit system. Currently, the staff is reviewing internal documents to move the milestone forward. The disruptions noted is related to Objective One, which is a public and private partnership for a CNG fueling site close to Fabin's. The project was explored, however, there was a lack of progress due to the lack of demand, cost, and lack of interest in compressed national gas, CNG vehicles. If we move back to the presentation, please. Thank you. To promote collaboration and engagement, Goal Five, nine objectives and sixteen milestone activities were implemented. The progress of achieving this goal is at thirty-eight percent, an increase of seven percentage points since the last quarter. Next slide, please. Thirty-one percent of objectives have been completed, and forty-four percent are on track. There were some disruptions reported, and a milestone activity was discontinued. Let's transition to the public plan to provide more detail. A completed milestone includes the promotion of the census. The county invested three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in marketing efforts, developed a one-of-a-kind interactive heat map to target strategies and resources. Further, county staff participated in all committees, and several departments coordinated and engaged in phone banking outreach efforts. Also completed is an increased presence in the academic stage nationally, including involvement in professional organizations. Dr. Roscon reported involvement in CFRT and PAG. Dr. Roscon's efforts are documented in an annual report. Moreover, the majority of objectives are on track, including internal collaboration to increase cohesion and obtain results. These efforts include regular meetings with the judiciary and elected officials. Some disruption was noted, included a pause on achieving the best place-to-work-in-Texas Award due to the pandemic and limited resources. The research did not begin as planned. Another disruption was noted to Objective One. On April twenty-third, 2020, county administration gave a presentation to the court on the financial impact of COVID and how to best prepare. The presentation specifically listed the position of binational affairs, which was discussed and temporarily suspended by the court in anticipation of shortfalls in the budget. If we go back to the presentation, please. Thank you. To advance community support services, Goal Six, eight objectives and eighteen milestone activities were created and implemented by staff. Progress towards achieving this goal is at eighty-two percent, a significant increase of sixty-two percentage points since the second quarter. Next slide, please. To advance community support services, three percent of objectives have been completed, and sixteen percent are on track. About eleven percent of milestones were discontinued, and ten percent milestones experienced some level of disruption. For more detail, let's move to the life plan. Objectives completed, including addressing public housing. Commissioners Court approved the operation strategy to allow HACEP to expand into El Paso County. Approval by the court will be granted on a project-by-project basis. The creation of an office for new Americans was also completed, and a position was filled as of July 2020. Implementation of a kiosk to find the nearest available housing was also completed. Although a kiosk was not used, information on bed availability in local shelters is readily available. A major disruption was due to COVID-19 was noted with the creation of a public-private partnership for workforce readiness. The disruption was due to COVID-19 and impacted the partnerships with the city, EPCC, UTEP, and other external entities, including Salesforce and Microsoft, to create a technology hub in El Paso to mirror the technology hub in Juarez. If we go to the next slide, please, in the presentation. The next goal is value El Paso family. The progress towards achieving this goal is at forty-nine percent, and the progress in the second quarter for the goal was at twenty-three percent. This goal includes eight objectives and sixteen milestone activities. Next slide, please. Thirty-eight percent of objectives are completed, and thirty-one percent are on track. Another thirty-one percent of objectives were discontinued due to the pandemic. Let's move to the life plan for more details. As you can see, Objective Three was completed and focused on creating a plan to increase the minimum county employee wage. The outcome of the study was presented to Commissioners Court. However, due to COVID, the strategy on how to move this objective forward will be revisited in fiscal year 21. Objectives One, Two, and Four, and Five are on track and include attract and retain an A-Force, the study of employees to learn what drives retention, and respond act on findings, and the offering of technology and adoption of policies for driving attraction and retention, such as telecommuting policy, paid parental leave, expanding employee education policy, and other progressive practices are on track. As noted earlier, milestones that were discontinued this fiscal year are due to COVID-19 and include specialized pay for ASC certifications, developing a regional workforce readiness plans for community agencies for private entities whereby the community agencies agree to train and develop the employees. Research and create a survey to learn more about employee engagement and satisfaction, and invest in county supervisors to ensure appropriate culture. Next slide, please. To strengthen financial health, Goal Eight, eight objectives and twenty milestone activities were identified and implemented. Progress for this goal stands at fifty-two percent, an increase of twenty-nine percentage points from the second quarter. Next slide, please. Twenty-nine percent of objectives were completed, and fifty-seven are on track. There was some disruption noted in two milestone activities. Let's transition to the public plan for more details. Objective Three had several completed milestones, which included the creation of a five- and ten-year vehicle and equipment replacement plan, the reduction of vendor repairs for fleet, increased training for mechanics, completion of grant application for fleet replacement or repair, and the evaluation of using the military surplus program for fleet. Objectives that are on track include aligned revenue and expense growth, have participatory budgeting, and earn an award of excellence in government finance. Disruptions due to the pandemic was noted for Objective One, and is related to exploring opportunities for sponsorships and advertising specific to the sports park, and partnering with health provider agencies to improve community health and wellness. If we move to the plan, please, to the presentation. Last, to optimize internal processes, Goal Nine, five objectives and fourteen milestone activities were identified and implemented. Progress is at sixty-eight percent, an increase of forty-five percentage points since the last quarter. Next slide, please. Fifty percent of objectives were completed, thirty-six percent are on track, and seven of the milestones were discontinued, and seven percent are pending status. Let's transition to the life plan for more detailed information. Completed milestones under Objective Three include the development of an open PO process approved by the court on June 2019. The creation of a ready-to-use bed specifications for vehicles and equipment procurement, equipping law enforcement vehicles, fleet tracking GPS services, automotive repair parts, lubricants, bulk tires, bulk batteries, bulk onsite fuel, onsite fuel, and most fleet operation services have also been completed. Objectives that were on track include the evaluation of current business processes, including the completion and operation audit of each HR division, review and update a hundred percent of operational procedures, and complete training and retraining of a hundred percent of HR staff as it relates to implemented changes by August thirty-first, 2020. If we move back to the presentation, please. And with that last slide, we have informed the court of the progress and status of the strategic plan for the third quarter of the first year of implementation. These updates together show that the progress has been successful in moving forward the goals of the strategic plan in advancing the mission, vision, and core values of excellence, professionalism, integrity, and creativity of the court. I'm open to addressing any questions you may have. Thank you, Miguel, for moving back and forth between the plan and the life plan.
No problem.
Well, thank you, Dr. Madrigal. Really appreciate the great presentation, and as Betsy said, the challenges of trying to keep the strategic plan going under such incredible unprecedented variables that you've dealt with. So we thank you for that, and balancing, you know, what is it that we can do at this time? And keep that going, and what is it that we can't because it doesn't make sense? So I really thank you for that, and, you know, it just, the strategic plan has been such a valuable for us, you know, because we know our roadmap. We know which way we're going, what do we need to do. But I don't think it's ever been taken to the level that you're taking it. And I'm very appreciative. I'm very, had been very involved in strategic planning throughout my life, and I've seen the value when they're executed, and the, you know, just the distraction when we put it in a drawer and then pick it up the following year. And then you try to incorporate what didn't happen and so forth. So just keeping us in alignment is very valuable. And Betsy, thank you, and we would appreciate, you know, sort of periodically that you do this because we need to make sure we know where we're at, at that point in the roadmap are we at, and, you know, what's needed, and what do we need to address and so forth. So once again, Dr. Madrigal, it's a pleasure to have you on our team. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead. Can, I just had two quick questions. I wanted to, on the paid parental leave issue, can you give me an update on that first, and then I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. On the paid parental leave, when the court prioritized those items, it was one of, it was not one of your, you had multiple items under that value, the El Paso County goal, family goal, and the paid parental leave was one of the lowest priorities. So H R in there, what, everybody takes this back and ties it to their next two years of work plans. And I believe that one is scheduled for twenty twenty-two because it was one of the lower priority ones. So it, it moved down, but they are still working on that program and, and bringing that back. They have already come and talked to the court about some parameters, but it's in preparation for that later date.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the item regarding paid, creating paid internships, can, can you provide? Can you provide me some information on that, what, what that entails? And, and because I said, I saw there that you all had it as completed and I just wanted to understand what, how that's working.
They established parent, the internships were for students. If I remember correctly, it was at Cano Tio High School. They developed the plan, however, because of COVID nineteen, they had to stop the plan. They don't want students to be exposed and students couldn't be in the school, but they will move forward along with that program once we go back to post-COVID.
And we do have. Yes, and we do have a couple other paid internship programs with both the, the district attorney's office. I, I need to double check. I'm not sure if the county attorney's office is doing it, but we, we are working on some other, we also have done it in the public defender's office. So we have worked on some additional paid internship programs as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Robinson, did you have a question, sir?
I don't know if you're muted on your end, Commissioner.
No, not yet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day and great weekend, Dr. Madrigal.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay.
Judge, we still, before Jessica or Caesar continue, the next item is a presentation from the Economic Development Department. And I do believe, Andrea, do you believe we could get through this item within thirty minutes? Item number six.
Yes, ma'am, it shouldn't take much longer than fifteen, max.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, well, let me, let me take the opportunity at this time to just say that our break will be at eleven o'clock so we could hear the press conference. I, I believe that it will be a pivotal commentary and, you know, guidance and direction. I'm not sure of that. I'm just assuming that he was waiting for Labor Day results and they're not looking that drastic. And so we might be, be very important for all of us, the entire court to, to, you know, have that opportunity to listen to the governor's press conference at eleven. And then I'll, I'll have mine and the mayor's at three o'clock today so that we can address whatever pertains to us here in El Paso in this region. So I believe it's going to be important. We haven't heard from him in some time, so we'll take the break from eleven to twelve so we can listen to the conference. Thank you. Back to you, Andrea.
Item number six, receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department regarding an initiative to fund a transition center for separating service members interested in pursuing certifications or small businesses in the fields of aerospace, defense, and aviation in the West Texas and Southern New Mexico region.
Yes, good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Andrea Hudgens with the Economic Development Department. I am excited to introduce today Kevin Cardoza. Kevin is the newest member of our team and has been working very, very hard over the last few months. As you may recall, we had about two months ago applied for a relatively large grant through the Economic Development Administration to the tune of approximately five point five million dollars. We are fairly confident that we are going to be receiving that grant in the next couple of weeks. And so we thought it prudent to bring to the court a, a major part of that grant, which would be consideration of a proposed plan for the, the FAST project, we are calling it. And so I will hand it over to Kevin and let him explain a little bit more as to what this project entails. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Good morning, county judge, members of the court. My name is Kevin Cardoza with the Economic Development Department. As Andrea mentioned this morning, we would like to brief you on the concept of the FABENS Accelerator for Advanced and Strategic Training acronym FAST. Next slide, please. The FABENS Accelerator for Advanced Strategic Training is a concept to create a service member's transitioning center outside of Fort Bliss. One of the main objectives of this concept is to provide specialized training to transitioning service members with the intention of closing workforce gaps in defense, aviation, and aerospace industries. This concept will be funded by the Economic Development Administration grant, which would essentially cover two years of administrative fees. This concept would leverage existing assets at FABENS and facilitate the attraction of new business as well as D H S and D O D missions and/or operations. Next slide, please. The El Paso region, I would like to provide a quick overview of our assets in the El Paso region. The El Paso region has been recognized as the premier area for research, development, test, and evaluation for the Department of the Army and the Department of Defense. Additionally, our region is considered a power projection platform, meaning the region is equipped for rapid deployment and all national guard units nationwide get deployed out of our region. Some regional military assets to highlight are the restricted airspace, vast training terrain, and extensive capabilities for testing. Lastly, the El Paso region provides a highly skilled military workforce, which are key to this concept. Next slide, please. The opportunity that this concept will provide is capitalizing on the highly skilled transitioning service members that come out of our regional military installations. This concept would bring in our regional higher education institutions to provide specialized education, education desire in defense, aviation, aerospace. For example, some certifications in fiber optics, satellite communication systems, directed energy, just to name a few. Additionally, it would create unique partnerships with the private sector as under this concept that would be able to provide fellowships on site. Next slide, please. Through the partnership with the Alliance for Regional Military Support, we have been able to conduct some critical research identifying the workforce areas most needed within the civilian military workforce and facilitated conversations with military leadership to establish support and future partnerships for this concept. Ultimately, the main objective of the FABENS Accelerator for Advanced and Strategic Training is to promote and the growth of the defense and aerospace associated footprint in our region. Next slide, please. The concept of FAST is similarly, similarly aligned with other initiatives supported by the Department of Defense, like the Georgia Veterans Education Career Transitions Resource Center, the Abenei Veterans Connect Center, and the Virginia Values Veteran Initiative. The transition center would be less than traditional as it would provide F I A certifications, multi-spectral analysis training, and satellite communication systems training. The expansion of the effort at FABENS to include FAST would further enhance the attraction and expansion in aviation, defense, and aerospace. Next slide, please. One critical component of FABENS is that FABENS serves as the catalyst for our region as it is strategically located and provides a great opportunity to capture our regional capabilities. As you can see, it is at midpoint of two commercial space traveling facilities, Blue Origin and also the facility constructed by Virgin Galacta and T R C New Mexico. And it is surrounded by some state-of-the-art military facilities all throughout New Mexico and also West Texas. Next slide, please. The FABENS expansion would further enhance existing regional efforts like the Business Incubator and the City of Horizon. And it would create opportunities to incentivize, incentivize innovation. It would open the window to a county initiative policy for micro, small businesses specializing in this particular areas. Through the partnership with the Alliance for Regional Military Support, we would be able to facilitate the connection between small businesses and, and some Department of Defense components like the Army Futures Command currently located in Austin, Texas. Next slide, please. But before we are able to accomplish this concept, there are some next steps that we must take. First, we must receive the final award of the E D A funding, solidify partnerships with M O Us and contracts, solidify incentive programs and policies to enhance these efforts, and also, and most critically, mapping out future funding through state and federal grants. With that, I conclude this presentation and I would like to open this forum for any questions and or recommendations from the court. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Andrea?
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, Andrea Hudgens with the Economic Development Department. So as you can see from Kevin's presentation, you know, we've been working very, very hard with community partners to really make sure that the plan and program that we have put in place at FABENS is regional in concept, but is able to take advantage of so many of the local assets that we have and the efforts, as Kevin mentioned, through UTEP and through Horizon City and ARMS, I, I think are all going to conclusively come together through this effort. So I'm really, really excited and, like I said, hope that the, the team can make an announcement on that grant here relatively quickly.
Thank you. And Kevin, thank you. I know you've been quite an advocate for military and you've done such a great job of, of letting us know how important, you know, Fort Bliss is to us. But whenever we have an actual tangible relationship and partnership, that makes all the difference. I mean, we've talked years back, we had a lot of social kind of interactions with them and things seemed to be good, but we never really were at a community level. And I think this one sort of displays the, that relationship that is in the community, that it's not us visiting them on, you know, celebrating certain activities and so forth. And, and we wanted to move away from that, you know, four, five years ago and go into more of these partnerships that bring us together. When you have the university and military and City of Horizon ourselves, that, that is quite a an accomplishment to be at that level. So thank you for, for that effort that's been ongoing for a long time with you and your contribution. So I thank you for that, Kevin.
Thank you. We're looking forward to continuing our work.
Any further comments, Andrea, that you might want to bring forth?
No, sir, no, sir. I, I, I mean, just, I think, looking long-term, you know, some of the things that Kevin had referenced as far as, you know, plans and policies and things like that. I, I know that the team is working, you know, with UTEP and Horizon City to, to get some of those plans and policies in front of you relatively quickly. So, you know, I, I think when, when awarded a five million dollar grant, you have to operate quickly. And so we've been working hard to put things in place to make sure that we do that. So I don't have anything else for the court unless you all have questions for us. We just wanted to make you aware of the effort. We're doing as much as we can to get out in the community and, and get input and feedback. And so we want to make sure that we keep you all aware of, of our efforts.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all your work, Andrea, as well. Betsy, any concluding comments or?
I just think this is a really exciting opportunity. We talk about losing these transitioned military members, how many people are transitioning out that we're not able to capture and keep here in our community, who would be really valuable assets to keep in our community. They're highly skilled, they generally make higher wages, and this is an opportunity for us to help with that. And so I really appreciate the team working on this and bringing forward the concept. And I hope to hear soon that we get the grant and that we can move forward with this type of concept.
It's a kind of initiative that sort of hits so many dimensions, from employment to partnerships to, you know, having a rural community be more interactive and participative and economic development compotion of the whole city and county. So it just hit so many dimensions. So I do wish the best and hopefully we do get things going in the right direction. Commissioner Stout, do you have a question, comment?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have any questions. I, I think it's a great program. Kudos to our economic development staff to, you know, for being so proactive and, and looking for these types of grants. And, you know, time and time again, I've, you know, been, been, you know, very happy with, 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 with the productivity that's, that's going on in our economic development department. And, you know, this is great. I mean, we've done a lot of work with, you know, trying to, to help folks that are transitioning out of, out of military service. You know, we did work within our own H R department, looking at trying to match up military occupational M O S is what, I can't remember what the S is, M O S is, the military occupational descriptions to our own job descriptions and, and trying to hire veterans and and folks that are transitioning out. And I think this is, this is a great addition to those efforts and trying to, to help exactly what Betsy said, these folks stick around because they're, they're highly, highly trained and valuable assets. So thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Kevin, Andrea, Betsy, thank you very much.
Judge, I do think we'll also be able to present item number seven, if the court would allow.
Yes, go ahead.
Item number seven, discuss and receive a presentation regarding a digital magazine concept intended to highlight the food and agriculture activities in El Paso County.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I don't know what to do with myself getting all these items in before lunch. I just wanted to take a moment quickly and introduce E F A T. E F A T is a, is a key member of our team. I'm sorry, Fatima. She is a intern at UTEP from the excellent presentation that the group from the Lawyer Center was able to put together for the court back in March. E F A T had another fantastic idea that she wanted to bring to the court this year. Basically, in response to COVID nineteen, the court may remember that earlier in the year, we had discussions and, and the court had a consensus to move forward with the planning of a desert food festival in twenty twenty-one. And unfortunately, because of the current restrictions that are in place, we have kind of stepped back from a large group gathering and looked at some possible alternatives where we could continue to support our local restaurant industry and agricultural industries through alternative, more safe means. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to E F A T Fatima and allow her to give a brief overview of her idea for a digital concept that would hopefully do the same as a, as a desert food festival would.
Good morning, members of the court, and thank you, Andrea, for the introduction. I would like to start off by saying thank you for taking the time to meet with me this Thursday morning. As Andrea mentioned, I am currently an M B A student at UTEP. I have been fortunate enough to work with Andrea and her amazing team in the Economic Development Office. And one of the tasks that I was assigned was to work with Valerie in the Agriculture and Eco Tourism section. And one idea we came up with was this bi-national eats regional food magazine. Next slide, please. So the El Paso Chihuahua region is home to unique food and vivid culture that celebrates diversity. With this magazine, we hope to highlight the region's seasonal vibrant food culture, celebrating local cuisine and crops. Through the multifaceted and compelling storytelling, print publications, events, and digital platforms connecting readers with those who feed them, growers, producers, chefs, beverage and food artisans, and other food professionals. Understanding where our food come from empowers us all to make informed decisions about what we eat, what we stand for, and how to better support our community. Next slide, please. So I am originally from Austin, Texas, and when I moved to El Paso three years ago, I would only go to chain restaurants because I wasn't familiar with the food scene in our region. As I became more acclimated to the city, I discovered that El Paso has some of the best food in the nation due to its diverse culture. Over the years, I have met with chefs from the region who have taught me about local food history and ingredients. So according to an article written in September by the Texas Restaurant Association, El Paso is at risk of losing 30% of its restaurants due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now more than ever, these restaurants need assistance to highlight local diversity, especially through tourism. As you all are aware, one of the nation's biggest highway runs through our county, which means El Paso is an opportunistic tourist destination. One way we can increase tourism in our region is by highlighting local cuisines, chefs, restaurants, and teaching people how to utilize local ingredients to make authentic Mexican cuisine. Next slide, please. So the goal of this magazine is, the magazine will allow the county to establish an online and hard-to-read presence for continued marketing of small biz and expansion, local food and economy stimulation, and promote El Paso as a destination for agro-ecosustainable tourism. Next slide, please. This magazine will allow the county to, this magazine will bring together local chefs, producers, distributors, and highlight El Paso Chihuahua culture, represent our bi-national history, and encourage tourism and entrepreneurship. One thing I do really want to highlight is the entrepreneurship component. So the US farming industry contributes to more than $100 billion annually into the economy. However, the farming industry is currently being threatened by climate change, trade wars, and a changing workforce. Younger generations don't want to rely and adapt to traditional farming methods, which is one of the factors why the farming, farming industry is declining. With this magazine, we will be able to encourage local entrepreneurs to develop and innovate solutions for farming and produce sustainability. And just to give you an example, NMC is currently working with a local tortilla manufacturing company called Minerva. Their concept is to take traditional tortilla making techniques and automate them for mass production. Currently, local chefs are in the process of testing the viability of these tortillas like the chef at Almbar Restaurant. Highlighting entrepreneurs like the founders of Minerva will be one of the key priorities of this magazine. Next slide, please. So these are the sections of the magazine. One of the sections that we wanted to include is a farm-to-table component. Farm-to-table is an emerging trend in the food industry where consumers are able to see where produce and ingredients are used to make dishes where they're sourced from. Literally speaking, how products go from farm to table. El Paso has numerous co-ops and local farmers that source fresh ingredients from the region. With this portion, we hope to highlight local cuisine by encouraging local restaurants to source fresh ingredients from their region, highlighting regionally sourced produce. In addition, we also want to create a regional food history component. So the region is full of diverse culture and history, and I'm not just talking about Hispanic culture. We have a large Native American population just outside the city in addition to other ethnic cultures. One of the best restaurants in the region is a Japanese fusion restaurant that combines Mexican and Japanese dishes to create amazing fusion food. And the chef is actually from Japan. And like I mentioned before, we do want to highlight the entrepreneurship component. And another component that we really want to highlight is healthy living. So El Paso's median income is roughly around $43,000, which is why many people in the region are, are on EBT benefits, such as SNAP. With benefits like SNAP, it is cheaper to buy processed canned foods and fresh ingredients, which can have severe health repercussions. There have been numerous studies done since the pandemic correlating poor diet to the severity of COVID-19 symptoms. Many people don't know about local food co-ops that offer cheap produce, and some co-ops like Corado Food Market are accepting EBT benefits. It's just a matter of giving these co-ops a platform so that locals can afford, that normally can't afford fresh produce from grocery stores have another cheap alternative. And we also want to highlight community involvement. We are a resilient community that can withstand anything, including a pandemic, which is why it's a perfect opportunity to achieve and offer creative agriculture solutions that can be grown in your backyard. Next slide, please. So we want to have two different components of this magazine. One is a digital version, which will be an interactive blog displaying recipes, interviews, events, and entrepreneurship spotlight, and the farm-to-table component, where people can first see where their food is coming from. The digital magazine will be accessible through web and mobile so that if tourists want to explore local cuisine, they have it at their fingertips. In addition to Economic Development Office, we did have some food festivals lined up for the upcoming year, but because due to the pandemic, we weren't able to follow through with them. This, the digital version will be able to offer a live version of a food festival in a safe and effective manner. The print version of the magazine will be a cookbook hybrid that people can keep forever to reference. It will showcase local stories, regional food history, culture, in addition to recipes from our bi-national region. The print version will also serve as a regional souvenir so that people can keep part of El Paso wherever they go. Next slide, please. So the way that you want to distribute this magazine is to conduct aggressive digital marketing in addition to press releases to get the word out. Once the magazine has been printed and published, we want to send out PR boxes to key stakeholders for more digital promotion. In addition, we want to have the magazine available at local municipalities, the counties, and other organizations to all local restaurants as well. Next slide, please. So this is, so this is kind of what we're anticipating as the cost. We want to create quarterly magazine publications. Each one we want to do is going to cost about $20,000, and that includes everything from the content marketing to photography to any software that we need in addition to hiring or including a manager that will kind of manage all of these different components as well. Next slide, please. And that's it.
That's a great presentation. Really, really hits the, that mark that we've been always thinking how great we are in our food, but we need to know, get more people to know that. We, we know it, but we need the world to know it. And there are just two comments. You know, the culinary arts at Community College has just produced some amazing chefs, and, and so I'm hoping there's a partnership there. Bowie High School have been recognized nationally for their food truck, and, and so hopefully that would be another feature. One, one huge advocate, and I could, hopefully I can help you, of El Paso is Aaron Sanchez, which is, you know, nationally known and has his own program. And, and he's been wanting to see how he can participate in bringing something back to El Paso. So if, if he could be featured or if I could help with a connectivity with him, like I said, he's been, we've been wanting to see how do we get him in? COVID is not allowed, as he's had, I think we've canceled two or three trips to grand openings that he was, he was going to be here in El Paso. I think he'd be a great advocate for the magazine. So if there's something that I could do and, or get other people that have a direct connection with him, hopefully that'll enhance the magazine if, you know, if it does come to fruition. And like I said, El Paso Community College, I mean, just amazing things that they've done and some of the chefs that they produce. So hopefully that there's a partnership there. But once again, thank you for excellent presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Questions?
So Judge Commissioners, this is Andrea Hutchins. Yes, I was, I was hoping just to also interject, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm having some connectivity issues. So I turned my, my phone on earlier, and then I guess that wasn't working with video, so I've just turned my video off. I apologize. But I, I wanted it to be clear to the court that today we were hoping to gain some sort of consensus to find whether or not this is something that the court would be interested in pursuing. We did budget this year for funds for a desert food festival and similar activities. There is still a chance toward the end of the year, if restrictions, you know, might lift, that we could do something. But with not knowing, we won't have adequate time to put contracts and plans in place. So hopefully this could be kind of like a hybrid measure, if you will. So I don't know if this is something that, that we could possibly gain consensus from the court today on whether or not you would be interested in us pursuing this further.
Well, I'm very, I'm very pleased, and I know the interaction with healthy food and, you know, things that Commissioner Stout has, has worked on. There's such a connectivity to our, our own strategic planning. I said earlier that as we discovered the pandemic uncovered so many, you know, unhealthy situations, we have to address people eating better, we have poor access sometimes to, to, to proper food. And I don't know, it just sort of fits in very well to, to our strategic planning and some of the healthy food concepts that Commissioner Stout has, has brought to us. And so particularly, I am very pleased with the program and hopefully the, the rest of the court finds the same attitude about, about this magazine.
I love, I love this, this proposal. I, I think, I think that it's, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty cool project. And, and as a judge was saying, it, it really helps, I, I think, in a lot of ways for us to advance healthy food initiatives, to advance economic development in the region, especially trying to get back to supporting the agricultural sector in, in this area. And I love the bi-national aspect of it. You know, I think that, you know, there, there's, there's just, there's just so much richness within this, within this project. And so, I mean, I, I fully 100% would support something like this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Comments, anyone else that would like to have consensus to, to, to make sure that we're, that they can continue and sort of research this and give us more information so we could move on this?
Judge, if there's no other comments, we'll work on what it would take to, to bring this forward. This would require us to contract out some of this management piece that Ifat referred to, but we could bring that back in a more formalized item for action. We just want to make sure there is support.
Well, you have it from two of us so far, but, but I would, I would love for you to continue working on that and then bringing it back as an action item so that I know times of, of the essence on these types of programs because we need to move quickly as, as the year is ending on us and be able to, you know, to look at some of this economic developments. The other dimension is the, the restaurants, to be able to highlight those restaurants that have great food and they're struggling right now and, and get people to, you know, entertain the idea of helping our restaurants to, to survive. I mean, that would be a shame that some of them would not survive simply because they're not promoted properly or don't have the money to, to promote themselves. And this would be a great place to promote their, their restaurants. If you could bring it back to us, Betsy, a little bit more formalized, I would, personally, I would really like that, to take place sooner than later.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Great presentation.
Oh, Judge, just, just briefly, if I, if I could, and I, I don't mean to take any more of your time, I know that you're getting ready to go. I just wanted to say, you know, you can obviously tell Ifat is, you know, full of great and wonderful ideas. She is going to be graduating this fall, and so I just wanted to publicly thank her for all of the creativity and enthusiasm that she has brought to our office. She really has made an impact on economic development in El Paso County, and I just wanted to thank her for that.
Okay, thank you. You already told her that there's no tickets out of town, that they're just staying.
Yep. You know, you have the one-way street.
All the airports are closed, you can't leave, you're quarantined for two years. No, but excellent, excellent students, so thank you. Okay, well, I don't know, we could time it any better. So it's 10:56. Jessica, I think this is where we'll take the break and then be back at 12 o'clock.
Okay. Commissioner, this court will recess until 12:00 PM.
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betis for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Callie Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabians warehouse located at 1331 North Fabian Street in Fabians, Texas 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epecounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including disorder, including PTSD; or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Hi, this is County Judge Salmaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betas for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Carlson from Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless, we count.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epccounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioners' Court has reached a meeting to special open discussion. Item number eight, receipt of presentation from the Economic Development Department regarding the potential uses of industrial revenue bonds as an economic development tool to further potential projects.
Good afternoon, Judges and Commissioners. Andrea Hutchins with Economic Development Department. I am pleased to announce another fantastic member of our team, Marcos Duran. Marcos is in charge of a lot of the public affairs efforts that you see coming from our team. And so, as most of our teams here are at the county, he also wears many hats and researcher is one of them. So, he is going to briefly discuss with you a tool that I hope that the court will consider taking a little bit more advantage of, and that is industrial revenue bonds. So, Marcos, I'll let you take it away.
My apologies. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Judge. Again, my name is Marcos Duran, and today I will be speaking to you all about industrial revenue bonds on behalf of the Economic Development Department. We believe that these bonds could expand the incentive toolkit available to the county, which would assist us
About how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@ep county dot com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the County holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the County's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioners Court has reached a meeting to special open discussion. Item number eight, we see our presentation from the Economic Development Department regarding the potential uses of industrial revenue bonds as an economic development tool to further potential project.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Andrea Hutchins with Economic Development Department. I am pleased to announce another fantastic member of our team, Marcos Duran. Marcos is in charge of a lot of the public affairs efforts that you see coming from our team. And so, as most of our teams here are at the county, he also wears many hats and researcher is one of them. So, he is going to briefly discuss with you a tool that I hope that the court will consider taking a little bit more advantage of, and that is industrial revenue bonds. So, Marcos, I'll let you take it away.
You're muted, Marcos?
You're muted, yeah.
My apologies. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Judge. Again, my name is Marcos Duran, and today I will be speaking to you all about industrial revenue bonds on behalf of the Economic Development Department. We believe that these bonds could expand the incentive toolkit available to the county, which would assist us in our efforts, you can stay on the first slide, which would assist us in our efforts to attract businesses as well as our business retention and expansion efforts. So, for the first part of the presentation, I will provide a general overview of IRBs. We will then go into more detail about how Texas has implemented industrial revenue bonds, and finally, we will discuss some additional considerations. Next slide, please. Industrial revenue bonds can be described in several ways. At a basic level, they are a complex vehicle for tax abatement. They also require an intricate set of legal and financial documents. But perhaps a general purpose definition of IRBs is that they are a loan from a bond purchaser to a company where the loan proceeds and repayment flow through a government issuer, such as the county. Next slide, please. Oftentimes, these bonds are misunderstood. Some may believe them to be a loan from a community to a company. Others may think that the community is providing a loan guarantee or some other kind of credit enhancement to the company, but in fact, neither of these are true, and industrial revenue bonds do not constitute a direct investment by a community in a project. This is why we do not need to hold a bond election for IRBs, and is also why IRBs would not affect the credit rating of the county. Next slide. So, let's discuss the benefits a company would get from industrial revenue bonds. IRBs can be a form of low-interest financing, especially in the case of tax-exempt IRBs, which tend to have lower interest rates. In addition, any land, buildings, or equipment purchased by IRBs are often exempt from property taxes. This means that the county would be able to provide tax relief to companies, not only for county property taxes, but other state and local property taxes as well. The way IRBs accomplish this tax relief is by keeping the title of all the property purchased by the bonds in the name of the issuing governmental entity until the bonds are fully repaid. Next slide. So, let us review the basic steps of the IRB process. First, a governmental entity, such as the county, issues the bonds. These bonds are then purchased, with the proceeds passing through to the company, which spends the bonds. The company then begins to make payments on the bonds, finally assuming full ownership of all the project assets when the bonds are repaid in full. There are a couple of points we'd like to emphasize here. First, the purchaser of the bonds is aware from the very beginning that the company is solely liable for the repayment of the bonds. In no way will the governmental entity have to repay these bonds. We'd also like to point out that during the bond repayment period, the governmental entity usually holds the title to the assets and enters into a lease agreement with the company, such that the company's lease payments are used to pay the debt service. Next slide, please. Now, in the event the company defaults on the bonds and can no longer make payments, the project assets are sold to pay back the bond purchaser. But again, the county would never have to pay back the bonds itself. Next slide. So now, let us review how the state of Texas has implemented the IRB process. In Texas, local governments are required to establish industrial development corporations, which then issue industrial revenue bonds on their behalf within their jurisdiction. Therefore, if the county were to create an IDC, it could issue IRBs for projects throughout the county. However, if neighboring Huddspith County, for instance, were to petition the El Paso Industrial Development Corporation to issue IRBs on its behalf, state law does allow for IDCs to issue IRBs in these instances. In Texas, these IDCs are the main vehicle that drive the IRB process. They are responsible for vetting and initially approving projects, and usually during the vetting process, there is an opportunity for public input. IDCs also coordinate with the bond purchaser and the company to establish the bond terms. And finally, the Industrial Development Corporation would be responsible for submitting an application to both the Attorney General's Office and the Governor's Office, both of which must approve any issuance of industrial revenue bonds in the state. Next slide, please. As we mentioned before, IRBs require close coordination between multiple entities, so we will take some time to review these entities again and their responsibilities. To begin, the county would be responsible for establishing the Industrial Development Corporation. And whenever the IDC approves a project, the county would also need to pass its own resolution approving the project before IRBs could be issued. The Industrial Development Corporation serves as the main vehicle responsible for the IRB process. It initially vets and approves projects. It coordinates with the bond purchaser and the company to establish the bond terms. It also receives the bond proceeds and passes them to the company to be spent. And finally, it enters into a lease agreement with the company during the bond repayment period. The private entity or company receives the bond proceeds from the IDC and spends them on property for the project. During the bond repayment period, when the title to all the assets remains in the name of the IDC, the company enters into a lease agreement and makes payments which go towards debt service. And finally, the bond purchaser is the entity providing the loan to the company. Sometimes, a purchaser is lined up before the IRBs are even issued. Other times, the IRBs are sold on a public marketplace. It is interesting to note that sometimes a company will buy its own industrial revenue bonds. This occurs in instances when the company has adequate capital and does not need financing. However, the fact that the company would pay no property taxes during the repayment term is still enough of an incentive for the company to engage in the IRB process. Next slide, please. In Texas, there are five different types of IRBs. Today, we will go into more depth about the first two listed here, tax-exempt IRBs for manufacturing projects specifically, and taxable IRBs which have less restrictions. In addition, there are also exempt facility bonds, sales tax bonds, and empowerment zone bonds, and if the court so wishes, we could return at a later date to go into more depth about these other three bonds, but we believe they are less applicable to our county than the first two we mentioned. Next slide, please. So, to begin, let's talk about tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds for manufacturing projects. For these projects, the IDC would only be allowed to issue up to $10 million per project in industrial revenue bonds. In addition, the total capital expenditures of each project cannot exceed $20 million, so there is a limit to the size of the project. And finally, these tax-exempt bonds are subject to the state's volume cap limit on tax-exempt bonds, which means that in addition to the other duties of the IDC, it would be responsible for getting permission from the state's Bond Review Board to issue these bonds. The Bond Review Board meets annually to allocate the state's volume cap using a lottery-based system. In the case of taxable IRBs, there are less limitations. There is no limit to the amount of IRBs the IDC would be able to issue per project, nor is there a size limit for the project. And of course, since these bonds are taxable, they are not subject to the state's volume cap limit on tax-exempt bonds. Next slide, please. At this time, there are a few main takeaways we'd like to emphasize about IRBs. To begin, industrial revenue bonds allow the county to expand its ability to provide property tax relief to a private entity, exempting the property purchased by IRBs from state and local property taxes for the duration of the bond repayment term. Also, it is important to note that in the case of tax-exempt IRBs, they cannot be issued at will, since they require the approval of the Bond Review Board, which uses a lottery-based system to allocate the state's volume cap limit on an annual basis. This means that if the county's industrial development corporation were to present multiple projects in the same year, these projects would be competing with each other for limited resources. And finally, the IRB process requires careful coordination from multiple entities, and especially in the case of tax-exempt IRBs, can sometimes face uncertain outcomes. So, the company is sometimes taking a risk engaging in the IRB process. The good news is that only companies that are very serious about relocating to El Paso or expanding in El Paso are likely to take the risk of the time needed to go through this process. Next slide, please. And at this time, we'd be happy to take any questions, recommendations, or anything else.
First time that happens, right? So, anyway, Andrea, Marco, thank you for that great presentation. But I wanted to ask you, just to make it a little bit more tangible, is there something on like in the pipeline or things that have happened recently that by doing the this type of bond would have helped? Just for our own information as to how we would have connected or what's on the pipeline that would help us move forward because of this bond?
So, Marcos, if you don't mind me interjecting just a little bit here. So, you know, Marcos first initially started doing research on IRBs based on a conversation that we had had way back in March. And so, at that time, there was not really a project, you know, a tangible project that we had. But in my past experience, having utilized IRBs and understanding what a valuable tool that they can be for economic development, you know, we just started kind of just doing some additional research so that we could make the court aware of what a valuable asset they might be. That being said, around the end of the July timeframe, we were contacted by the Border Plex Alliance, who had a potential client that was interested in pursuing an IRB in El Paso County. And when I kind of educated them that, you know, this is something that we were also interested in taking to the court for possible consideration, but understanding that, you know, we're in the very early infancy stages. As Marcos mentioned, we would have to create an IDC and a number of other things. They are still interested in El Paso, understanding that there could be an extended timeline to get a program in place to assist them. And then to answer your final question about what type of projects would be most interested in this, as Marcos kind of outlined, this tool could be utilized for a number of industries, but most often it is utilized for manufacturing. So, in other communities I have seen where they set aside land for like say an industrial park where they have maybe medical device manufacturing or some sort of specialized manufacturing grouping of facilities, and they utilize IRBs for those companies that are interested in coming in rather than a property tax rebate. And they do that because oftentimes, there is already a public investment in an industrial park. If maybe say the county or the city were to have put aside land and put in maybe sewer or other types of public utilities, the IRB could be something that the business could use as an economic incentive where it wouldn't cost extra burden for the county. So, hopefully that answers your questions.
No, it does. Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure we were, you know, something that we did, there was something out there that made sense for us that we could sort of expedite if we did get into the IRB. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I would just like to also point out, currently under legal review, we're working to get more information before we bring a full-on plan to the court. There is a potential for utilizing the Land Development Corporation that, I'm sorry, I messed that up, the Land Grant Corporation, I think it is. Is it LGC, Betsy? Is that right? No?
I think it's the Local Government Corporation.
Yes, there you go. I knew it was one of those that Jose is going to be working with. We had discussed whether or not they would be a good candidate to possibly be designated as an IDC by the Commissioners Court, and right now, that's under legal review. So, I'm not for sure, but the office is looking at potential alternatives.
Commissioner Perez, were you gonna say something?
Commissioner Perez, or you?
Yes, I just had, it seems like an interesting tool. I mean, anytime that we can expand our toolbox for economic development resources, I think it's a great option. But so, just for clarity, so does this, since everything would be under the county's name, from what I understand, would that, and that would exempt the entity benefiting from the industrial revenue bond from all taxes? So, I guess my question, has any other entity used this, like the city, for example, and if they use it, does that mean that, you know, county taxes would essentially, are you essentially forcing other entities, are you forcing their hand in exempting taxes even when they may not, let's say, be in favor of a project?
Well, I think I can speak to that a little bit. So, technically, it wouldn't be all taxes. It would be property taxes specifically. And just like the county for other land that it owns does not pay state and local property taxes for the land that it owns, it would technically own the land and the property of the project throughout the bond repayment term. So, it would be treated just like any other county asset. It would be exempt from state and local property taxes. There is potential, as you mentioned, Commissioner, that if, you know, not everybody in the community is on board, that, you know, that it would be important to make sure everyone in the community is on board so that we can avoid any kind of sort of contentious situation, like you suggested. But that is the case. You know, it would only take one governmental entity to issue the bonds in order for the company to essentially receive a property tax exemption for the bond repayment term.
And there have been a couple really large projects that we were very interested in giving, getting, that one of the things we discussed was to meet the incentive that it was going to require. We would have either had to give a greater term or a greater percentage of incentive on just the county's tax dollar. Or we even discussed going to UMC to getting them to agree. We've discussed getting the schools to agree to certain cases before because the project was so valuable to us.
Okay. But so, I guess it is possible, so the city has never used this tool, right? From my understanding, I've never heard of the city using this project for, you know, when they lured Top Golf, you know, when they had some incentives at Montecchio. And now, I guess Great Wolf Lodge would have been subject to the 20 million cap, but it seems like an interesting tool. I guess I'm just wondering, you know, I guess that there is, so there is a potential where a governmental entity like the city could ultimately use this tool and exempt all taxes since it's sort of a workaround against using the property tax payment or the tax exemption that governmental entities have. Interesting. I mean, like I said, if it's, you know, if it gives us, you know, some leverage and some investments or gives us, you know, helps us to lure or expand companies here, I think it's a good option. But I think it's just something we have to be cautious of to make sure that we do work closely with other entities, because I could envision other entities using this against us, you know, where, you know, we do make a package more lucrative, we're doing it kind of at the expense of other entities, right? I mean, that's essentially what's giving us the additional advantage of the additional resources is that we get to exempt all taxes, and that's kind of where, kind of has the potential to make traditional property tax tools obsolete.
And Go ahead, Andrea, sorry.
Just quickly in response to Commissioner Perez's point. So, because of this, the state and both the federal government, because this isn't just a Texas tool, it's a tool available across the country, they have made the process of securing industrial revenue bonds rather cumbersome, to be frank. And so, the creation of the IDC and some other things, you know, are just some of the initial steps. But an actual IRB application is often relatively expensive. So, it's very similar to, like, if you were to receive some sort of a tax credit for like historic properties or some of the other really cumbersome tax credits. like, historic properties, or some of the other really cumbersome tax credits that are very expensive, like in the realm of attorney fees and things like that, you know, they do that, I believe, on purpose, so that it's not generally just used for, maybe say, a retail facility like Top Golf. And so, Marcos, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add to that, but there's a reason why it's often just manufacturing companies that use it. There's oftentimes a lot of incentive tied to inventory and things like that, that kind of, it becomes somewhat in the weeds of the actual application itself. But it's a relatively cumbersome process, so I don't think you're gonna have that happen often. I think that there are a few projects that Betsy mentioned, maybe two this year, that could have fallen under the category of industrial revenue bonds. But quite frankly, it could have shortened the term that we had for incentives for that company, had we been able to go that route. So, Marcos, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
No, I would just reiterate that, you know, the, are, that the Chapter 381 agreements, the Chapter 380 agreements from the city are much more flexible, and that they're easier to put into place. So, whenever we're trying to get projects going, and we need to get an incentive package from the community quickly, that's, that can be reliable, then, you know, we would probably still stick with those tools, because of how, how much, how it is like left up to our localities to issue those kinds of agreements, with a lot of leeway. The industrial revenue bonds, they require the approval of not one, but two state, you know, offices, and then if they're tax exempt, we have to go to the bond review board. The bond review board is allocating those bonds out on a lottery-based system. So, you know, as Andrea said, it's expensive to pursue, and then to risk it not even being issued. In the case of tax exempt bonds, this is not going to be a tool that very many localities are going to use frequently. And it is very different in other states. I know that in part of my early research, I didn't include very much about this, but in New Mexico, it's much easier for them compared to some of the state, Texas's requirements. They don't need an IDC, the government can issue it directly. So, they don't need to have the corporation in place, they don't have to have some of these other, I suppose, steps in the process. And, you know, Albuquerque issues IRBs all the time. And so, Texas, I think, has made sort of an effort to make this a toolkit that's available, but, you know, not a one-size-fits-all tool by any means. So, yeah.
No, Marcos, that's a really good point, and something that we should point out to the court. When we look at being competitive against other states, which I know that we so often do, I know for sure that the states of Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, and Colorado do not require authority from the state to approve such a bond. The municipalities at a local level, they've put the application on their website, as long as the company pays the attorney fees to get those things processed, they're approved. So, other states do have a much easier process in place.
Well, anytime introducing a new tool, you know, we just gotta carefully study, because El Paso is unique from the rest of Texas. I mean, in the sense that, and Texas is unique from other states, one is that, you know, we're very property tax dependent. And so, we have already, the state of Texas on the whole has higher property taxes than other states. And number two, El Paso has higher property taxes than the rest of the state of Texas. So, I can see this being very advantageous for the county, because the city has almost double the property tax that we do. And then, you know, we've never had the ability to, I mean, we've always had the option of abating UMC's taxes. We've only done that for very lucrative, or very large agreements in the past, but we've never had the ability to abate ESD taxes, community college taxes, school district taxes, which are by far the largest, you know, they account for 50% of the tax bill. I mean, so you're looking at about, I think, current cumulative tax rate is $35,000 per million dollars of property, versus just the county, which I would imagine, I think, is what, just $5,000 for every 100,000, if I got that roughly about right? I mean, so you see how we have the ability to make the package significantly more lucrative, because it's, I mean, we're only a quarter of the tax bill, you know? So, we essentially have the power then to abate the remaining 75%. I mean, that's, it's a powerful tool. I just, you know, just be sure that we study that, and that we look at, because I think the implications are pretty significant, just given the differences here in El Paso. But I don't think you have that as much as you would in other jurisdictions, where, you know, the city of Austin's tax rate isn't as large as the city of El Paso's. Their county's tax rate, I think, is, you know, 30 cents compared to roughly our 50 cents. So, you know, it seems like it has, you know, a lot of benefits, but just, I guess we've just really got to study, you know, what it's gonna mean, and then if we start employing this tool, you know, is it something that we're gonna want? You know, cities have never had the ability to abate county and hospital taxes, and, you know, when they have that authority, you know, it's gonna be pretty advantageous, you know, especially, you know, school district taxes and things like that. But thanks, it's very informative.
Yeah, I agree. It's a great tool, using a very unique, and as Commissioner Perez says, just really being careful as we move forward, because it's a new tool. But I agree, great tool, just need to find the right fit for it. Commissioner, stop.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you all for the presentation. Got a couple of questions. So, first, I mean, what happens if the company defaults on the payments to the county? What, I mean, we end up just having, being stuck with that, with whatever property that we issued the bond for? I mean, how does it work when there are those types of issues?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you for the question. And those instances, what we would do is the county would sell all the project assets, the land and the property that is part of that project, to pay back the bond purchaser. Now, as I think I mentioned before, the purchaser knows from the beginning what IRBs are gonna be, and it's very clear to the purchaser that, you know, this is the deal. The company's going to, you know, pay, make lease payments to the county, and that money's gonna pass through and pay the bond purchaser, you know? So, they're gonna get their payments from the company. And in the event of default, really, the only thing that they have access to is the project assets. So, the county, you know, all that would be sold off to pay the bond purchaser. We wouldn't be stuck with any of the project assets, and then the county would not have to, it would have zero impact on the county's actual, you know, revenue and our budget. That's why it doesn't affect our credit rating to issue IRBs, because we will never have to pay that back. It's very clearly stated in the bond terms, that it's essentially an agreement between the purchaser and the company. And we're just a mediator that allows for this exemption from the property taxes, which is, you know, where the incentive comes.
And then, I don't know, in other communities, I mean, the research you've done in other states that utilize these, you know, I mean, I just wonder, I mean, I guess it's something that we would have to talk about, what our philosophies and what our plan would be, I mean, or if we would just look at these on a case-by-case basis, or if we have, we would have a threshold as to, you know, I mean, I guess the process would kind of be the same that we utilize for the other, like, 381 agreements and things like that? That's completely up to us, right?
Correct, Commissioner. Well, what in fact happened is...
Or is, I guess, further, just, or is that up to the board that we would approve? Or the board that we would appoint?
Correct.
To, would they be making the policy decisions, or would we be making the policy decisions as it comes to who gets, who would get these types of incentives?
Yes. So technically, the industrial development corporation that the county would create would adopt its own bylaws and rules about, you know, how it wants to look at projects, what qualifies, what doesn't qualify. And the county would be responsible for appointing people to its board of directors. So, it would have that oversight. But in addition to that, the county, like IRBs cannot be issued without the county itself, not the corporation, but the county itself, also adopting its own resolution to approve a project. So, the county could also, in parallel, have its own rules and, you know, policies about what projects it would approve, and, you know, it would make sense for the IDC to align itself with those as well. So, nothing prevents the county from adopting its own policies on the matter, since it also is needed, you know, the county also needs to approve its projects before the state will then approve it.
Okay. And then, so the rules would be changed as well when it comes to, I guess, the way tax-exempt bonds can be utilized? Because from what I understand, tax-exempt bonds are not to be utilized for creating income, for example, for the county, right? You can only, I guess, 10% of what we invest regarding, when it comes to tax-exempt bonds can actually be the revenue generating, I guess. And so, when, I mean, I realize that there are, I guess, limitations when it comes to the size of the project, if you're gonna be using tax-exempt bonds in this context, but those revenue generating, those revenue generating rules don't apply?
Correct, Commissioner. The way the state handles the issuance of the tax-exempt IRBs is exclusively through the bond review board, the state bond review board. And so, the state bond review board will allocate, you know, out of the total amount of tax-exempt bonds that Texas can issue every year, it would, it allocates something like 6.7% to tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds. So, it just sort of fluctuates what the total amount is. I'm told that this year, it's something close to about $100 million in tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds, that the bond review board would be approving. And so, it would be coming out of that pool, and if there are, you know, I'm not entirely familiar with the rest of the tax-exempt bonds here at the county, but, you know, it is a separate pool that's allocated by the state. So, it follows that, those specific procedures.
Right. Go ahead. Well, it is considered a private activity bond, versus the type of debt we issue directly for our projects, where we do have those restrictions.
Yes, ma'am. And I should also just add, there is no maximum to the bond, there is however, a minimum. So, Marcos, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the minimum is $50 million for a project to even be considered for eligibility.
Yeah. You know, I was reviewing the website of the Governor's Economic Development Office, and I actually, in the case of tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds, they limited the size of capital expenditures to $20 million. So, you know, 50 million would actually be too much, and would not apply. And I think they do that because, you know, there's a lot of different localities that are trying to issue these tax-exempt IRBs, and it's sort of limited resources. So, I think they try and limit the size of the IRBs, at least in the case of tax-exempt IRBs. And so, that's what my research came up with. And I didn't see any other restrictions when it came to taxable IRBs. We could essentially issue as much as we wanted, the project size could be whatever size we wanted. I didn't see anything about a minimum, but I didn't, I was referencing, you know, some information that was on sort of several different websites, and I, you know, I didn't actually read the statute that closely. So, there could be a minimum in the statute itself that may just not be represented, from what I saw.
Can you, and I don't know, Betsy, if you can, or just, I mean, in the traditional sense, I mean, what is the difference between, just so the public understands, a tax-exempt bond and a regular bond? Why are there different rules?
Yes. So, in the case of tax-exempt bonds, the people who are the entities that purchase these bonds, they don't have to pay taxes on the interest that they receive from those bonds. And so, they essentially get a little bit of a tax break from, you could say, you know, not a correct term, but for, you know, general purposes, sort of like the profit that they're making off of this loan that they're giving. So, they don't have to pay, you know, taxes on that, so that's what tax-exempt means. It pertains specifically to the person who's buying the bonds and fronting, and, you know, giving the money upfront, versus bonds where, you know, they'll have higher interest rates when they're taxable, because people, the people who are buying these bonds wouldn't buy them with lower interest rates, because they have to pay those taxes, right? So, that would be sort of the main difference. Tax-exempt and taxable is really referring to the interest payments and the benefit to the bond purchaser.
Thank you.
Which for us, which for us, it does make a difference because of those rules. And lately, the difference between the interest on a taxable bond and a non-taxable bond was getting to be less and less. As you know, there's been times we've refinanced and issued it as taxable, so we could enjoy the freedom from some of the restrictions that come with non-taxable bonds.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Judge. Thanks.
That's great information, great dialogue, but my goodness, Marcos, you're very well-versed at these things. Thank you. We're very privileged to have you have that kind of understanding. So, thank you for your insights and observations on this bond. Thank you. Any further questions? Betsy, anything we need to do here at this point?
Judge, it sounds like there's interest in this type of program. We'd like to vet it a little bit further. Also, maybe Marcos have, you work with Wally in our bond council, just so that there's any additional advice that they could give, or examples of where it's been used, and so that we can also look at and bring back more information about how it works in other entities, like the exact, like, what the parameters are for the IDC versus the county? How long, like, are there parameters on how long this debt can remain, things like that? We could bring that back if there's, it sounds to me like there is interest, so we can continue exploring this. And I want to say one other quick thing about this, Judge. You all have heard me say this probably multiple times, and I've said it a lot here lately, but Andrea is really an idea generator, and this is something where, today is an example of just, an idea generator creates other idea generators. And I see that in Andrea and her team. As you all know, Andrea's leaving next week, is her last week, and I'm just really sad to be losing the talent and the knowledge that she's brought, and the ideas that she's brought to us. I know we'll always be able to tap into her for the foreseeable future, hopefully, the long future, but just really appreciate, you know, her willingness to continue to bring ideas to the table, to continue to help us grow, to continue to help us be better, and real significant contributions she's made in the time we've had with her.
Well, let me add to the guilt. Let me add to the guilt of not only us in our county family, but the city and county itself. I've heard some, you know, great things and things that have happened, Andrea, we really, you know, just, it's given us our seat at the table, and I think that because of you and helping us transition, that we will be at the table more than we've ever been before. And so, we're just gonna make sure that, as you're walking out, nobody closes the door on us, as all the doors that you've opened, because you've opened a lot of doors, whether it's from the military, or the city, or the relationship with economic development, not only there, but Horizon, and even with Juarez, I mean, even to the extent of Mexico. So, we obviously wish you the best, and, you know, we're never gonna get over this, but don't worry about that, okay? Just kidding, Andrea. We somehow...
No, no, I appreciate it. I love El Paso County, and you guys have such a tremendous future ahead of you, and an amazing economic development team. So, I'm truly blessed to have been a part of it. So, thank you for the accolades, I appreciate that, but it's really been having such a great team. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you very much, and will in the future. I think you're gonna be a great advocate for El Paso, and... Okay, thank you, we appreciate you very much, and, and will in the future, I think you're gonna be a great advocate for, for El Paso and. Uh, align things our way, or find out about things that you could share with us, because I know your heart and passion for El Paso is amazing, so. Thank you Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you Marcos, great presentation, appreciate it. Jessica?
Thank you Judge, item number nine, receive a presentation regarding a potential name change of the current. Currently recognized Columbus Day holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Good afternoon Judge and Commissioners, Michelle Cochran with the HR Department. In an effort to maintain a diverse and inclusive culture within the county workforce. We have conducted research regarding the Columbus Day holiday to best determine whether a name change might be needed. Today's presentation includes research trends and comparisons of other communities and states within the US. And further provides a recommendation for your consideration. Next slide please. I will begin with a little bit of history on this holiday. Columbus Day is a county and US holiday that commemorates the landing of Christopher Columbus in the Americas in fourteen ninety-two. This year, we will celebrate the holiday on Monday, October twelfth. For many, the holiday is a way of both honoring Columbus's achievements and celebrating Italian American heritage. While the landing is celebrated as Columbus Day in the United States, the name does vary on the international spectrum. For example, in some Latin American countries, October twelfth is known as Dia de la Raza, or Day of the Race. Next slide please. The celebration of Columbus Day in the United States began to decline at the end of the twentieth century. The states on the slide, as well as parts of California, do not recognize it. And have replaced it with celebrations of Indigenous Peoples' Day. While Hawaii uses Discover's Day, and in South Dakota, as well as various tribal governments in Oklahoma. It is known as Native American Day. Iowa and Nevada do not celebrate Columbus Day as an official holiday. But the state's respective governors are authorized and requested by statute to proclaim the day each year. A lack of recognition or a reduced level of observance for Columbus Day is not always due to concerns about honoring Native Americans. For example, Columbus, Ohio has chosen to honor veterans instead of Christopher Columbus. And removed Columbus Day as a city holiday. In the states of Oregon and Washington, Columbus Day is not an official holiday. Additionally, several states have removed the day as a paid holiday for state government workers. While maintaining it either as a day of recognition, or as a legal holiday for other purposes. These states include California and Texas. Indigenous Peoples' Day began as a way to recognize the native populations that were displaced. After Columbus and other European explorers reached the continent. This started in Berkeley, California in nineteen ninety-two. As of two thousand eighteen, the list of cities you see on the screen have followed suit. Most recently, Michigan, Wisconsin, and the District of Columbia have also changed this holiday. Next slide. In closing, if the court is interested in renaming the Columbus Day holiday based off of this research. And based on the diverse and inclusive changes that are occurring in our country today. Our recommendation for you is to rename the October holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day. No action is scheduled on this item for today, but if it is the will of the court, we will bring this item back at a subsequent regular meeting. Are there any questions?
Judge, I just wanted to, to make a comment, I, I appreciate greatly the, the work done by the HR department to, to bring this item. That's something that me and my staff have talked about, and have reached out to the HR department about. And, and, and we're very um, happy to hear that they, that, that they were working on this, so. Um, you know, I, I believe that, that we need to um, get with the times and, and um. Make this change, I thi- I think it would, it will, would say a lot uh, for, for this community and, and. Um, uh, and, and recognizing uh, the importance of. Um, our indigenous community and, and, and its um, contributions to our culture and our. Our history and our society here in El Paso, and so I, I um, one hundred percent am in support of, of doing this.
Michelle, thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Stout is right, I think we have very few opportunities to. You know, we could be more general, like some of the other uh, states and, you know, generalize it. But our indigenous here is so important, I mean, he, we're so close and to some of the. Uh, very known indigenous tribes here in El Paso, La Cruz, New Mexico, all these areas, especially in Mexico as well. Uh, I mean, that's a big component of it. So I'm very supportive, and I, I thank you for bringing it up, and thank you for Commissioner Stout and his team to bring this up. To HR, and you guys always respond very well to, to our requests, and I think this is one that. That we can feel very proud of, and hopefully that we are able to do this uh, prior to our, our next holiday on the twelfth. That if we could accomplish this, it would be very, very favorable. Now Betsy, do you see any reason why we wouldn't be able to accomplish this before our holiday on the twelfth?
HR plans to have this item on the agenda for the court's adoption on Monday, I believe. Um, so I do believe we will be ready to go by the, the next um, annual Indigenous Day. Um, Indigenous Peoples' Day for October.
Oh, that'd be great, that would be great, this is a good time as well, uh, to, to do something like this, to show our. Our unity and our diversity here in our, in our community, so that would be excellent.
Very well Judge, we'll have that on some Monday, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Michelle.
Jessica?
Item number ten, receive a presentation and provide direction regarding the creation of a policy for the El Paso County's. Fund for Excellence Scholarship Program.
Good afternoon Judge and Commissioners, Melissa Carillo with Human Resources. This afternoon, I would like to brief the court on the county's Fund for Excellence Program, uh, Scholarship Program. My intent is to provide you all with a brief history of this program. And seek your guidance as we look towards creating a policy which will help guide this process moving forward. Next slide please Alexis. In October of two thousand one, the county of El Paso and the University of Texas at El Paso entered into an agreed judgment. Which governed the transfer of the Sun Bowl Stadium property from the county to UTEP. The judgment stipulates many terms, however, it included requirements that UTEP would use the property as a part of the campus. To modify and expand the property for use as an integral part of their athletic facilities. And for the university to present cultural and entertainment events for the community and the public. As part of the agreement, the county and UTEP entered into a memorandum of agreement in September of two thousand one. Which created the county's Fund for Excellence Scholarship Program. And established and funded in perpetuity full scholarships for ten recipients, county scholars. Towards an education at UTEP. The value of such scholarships shall be maintained through indexing tuition rates. And scholarships are renewable each year for students who maintain the scholarship requirements. As a result, each county commissioner awards two scholarships to eligible students residing in his or her, or her precinct. And the county judge awards two additional scholarships to eligible students residing in the greater county of the El Paso area. These ten scholarships fall under the Presidential Excellence Scholarship Guidelines. Next slide please. The HR department is currently working together with Ms. Chelsea Lamego with UTEP Institutional Advancement and Scholarship Department. As well as Ms. Heidi Granger with the Student Finance Services Team. To formalize our process as we continue working through these program guidelines. I want to especially thank Luz Rojas from my team, who has really spearheaded this project and led the progress on this policy discussion today. Today, we have some items we'd like to review with the court so that we may finalize this policy and continue our efforts with UTEP. Those items include precinct location, a review of the current scholarship guidelines, and employee preference. Next slide please. The HR office has been reviewing applications for vacant scholarship slots since two thousand and seventeen. During this time, the applicant's home address in which they reside has been used. Similarly, when this program was being reviewed by the county judge's office prior to twenty seventeen, the home address was also being used. Unless there are no objections, we will continue using home address as the identifying factor for precinct consideration. Next slide please. In accordance with the agreement, the county also uses UTEP's Presidential Excellence Scholarship Eligibility Criteria. Which is displayed on your screen. This criteria requires that qualified applicants must be in the top three percent of high school graduation classes. Their high school average must be a ninety-six or better on a hundred point scale. They must have received a twelve twenty minimum score on the SAT, or a twenty-seven minimum score on their ACT. And they must display evidence of exceptional leadership abilities and achievements. The agreement stipulates that the county may propose additional criteria within the constraints of the university's standard eligibility requirements. If there's any other criteria that the court would like us to consider and review with UTEP, we will be seeking that guidance today. Next slide please. Finally, one point that did come up in discussion with a prior court was the potential to grant county employee and family preference. When awarding such scholarships. Should the court be interested in this idea? We can do this via preference points, or via automatic consideration. Any changes made to the current practices will be reviewed with our UTEP partners. And a formal policy will be brought back for the court's formal consideration in the near future. Our intent today is really to ensure all ten scholarship slots are regularly maintained in accordance with the adopted policy guidelines. And to join with UTEP in publicly announcing the recipients of the ten scholarships each year. Next slide please. So at this point, I'd like to address any questions the court may have and discuss any further guidance.
Thank you Melissa, and thank you Luz for, for that work, and uh, just a couple of comments, you know, I really believe that um. There we, if we applied for best place to work, and I've been sort of pushing that. And hopefully HR does uh, apply for that, because I think we're really, really close. To, to being that caliber of, of the best place to work, especially here in El Paso. Uh, and if we do that, uh, the family uh, is a big uh, part of it, how you. Not only what you do for employees, but what is it that you do for employees that reaches the family, is a big component of that. And it's also a big component of low turnover, a component of morale, uh, of, of motivational kind of. When, when somebody does something for my family, or they care about my family, it really engages us as, as employees for that, for that company. So I would really uh, consider, I mean, I would encourage that we do look at our employees' families uh, as, as preference, whether we give them a. You know, it's a, additional points or something, but uh, then we'll decide on that, but I really would. Keep that open that our employees' families would be eligible, or highly more eligible than, than others, that would be one thing. Uh, the other one, and I don't know how you would work this out, but one of the things that we've seen that is really important for, for El Paso. And we have struggled is with volunteerism. And so, if there was any opportunity to add additional points for. For high school graduates that were, that had volunteered for the community, that had engaged in the community. Uh, I think it would help us with this drive of getting, you know, I spoke at the um, the um, uh. The shelter, food shelter, and I spoke to the volunteers there uh, to sort of motivate them. Because they were getting a little tired and, and, and sort of exhausted from everything that they're doing. Uh, but they're very limited, and we do struggle with volunteerism, so if we could connect it in some way. That they're at an advantage by having volunteered here in our community. Um, or, or anything that we could do to show that volunteerism is extremely important. As I told the group there, that um, their, their profile is completely different. Uh, having an employee who has volunteered opens up doors for them. Uh, they seem to see the world differently, they're more motivated, uh, so. Volunteerism isn't just that they contribute to the community, but it really helps them be more successful as employees, so. Just those two items uh, that I would like for you to consider, or, or the court to consider, as we move forward.
Yes sir, thank you Judge.
Thank you Melissa, Commissioner Stout?
Thank you, um, I agree, I, 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 I feel that um, you know, there's. I, I think that, that a lot of what we're looking at here, um, you know, the, the. I guess, what we're, what we're asking people to, to, to have, and it's very numbers in, in intensive and, and could exclude a lot of people. Um, and, you know, I, I, I think sometimes a, a lot of folks with those, with those, with those greater numbers. With, with higher scores and things like that, they, they have uh, many, many uh, scholarship opportunities, and so. And I think that, I mean, um, obviously, we, we want, uh, we want to reward. Um, good students, right, but we all, but I also think, uh, I'm also thinking on a, along the same lines as the judge, you know, to. Um, you know, having something community focused or service oriented to help qualify people. Especially because we have a public service mission here at the county, right, and so, um. I, and, and, and I, and I think that we should um, base it upon their. Where they live, not where they go to school.
Thank you Commissioner.
Melissa? Have we, I know that that was in the original agreement, those Presidential Excellence Guidelines. But have we asked UTEP if they, because the previous court, a previous court had discussed. An interest in selecting candidates that might not be eligible for so many other scholarships. Have we talked to UTEP about, would they be open to considering an amendment to that agreement?
We, we have spoken with them, they know that it's our intent, and it's been discussed by a previous court. And in reviewing the agreement for this preparation for this item. The agreement does say any amendment to the agreement may be agreed upon in writing by the authorized representative of the parties. And at the time that this agreement was signed, the county judge, the chancellor of uni- of the university. And the president of the university were the three parties who entered into this agreement. So I have not seen immense opposition from UTEP, I think they understand, we've had some of that come up before. And so, if that is the will of the court, we'll continue those discussions with UTEP. So that before we bring any formal policy or amendment to an agreement, we have UTEP on board so that we do this together.
I just think if the, it will, like some flexibility in those particular. Because if you have someone who is, who is, you know, been a BC student and, but has been very active in the community. And who is a child of a county employee, that may be more preference by a member of the court. Than some of the other candidates.
Okay.
Well, also some of the burden of having to work more because of their family, I mean, there's, it's just so difficult to. To say this is, that you're this excellent candidate, and they have found that sometimes uh, they, they, they. There's a possibility of scoring low, but being very successful as a student, so there's not that really, the connection that people believe. Because I've done a lot of research on that, because of, uh, in, in, one of the law school professors was very adamant about. That correlation, and so there, there's a lot of ways, and, and you're right, I mean, if someone is eliminated that should. Be considered, uh, they, they're very surprising, uh, they're working a lot of hours, or having to take care of family, there's other. Factors that keep them from being at that, you know, high level. Uh, ninety-seven percentile and all these other things that make it very difficult for some of our constituents, especially out in the, uh, the rural area. So, uh, I, I think that's a great consideration.
Okay. Wonderful, I will definitely take this guidance, unless the, any other members of the court have additional guidance. Continue to work with our partners at UTEP, and definitely bring back something for the court's consideration in the future.
Thank you Melissa, like I said, Luz, uh, thank Luz for us as well for this hard work and getting it to this point, thank you.
Thank you so much, she's watching, I told her, our goal this year is to get her on camera and do a presentation, so, we'll get there.
Okay, thank you Luz.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Oh, I hear you. Okay. I'm glad you, uh, it's, it's better directly to the person than uh to, to someone else. So thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your support.
Yes, Judge. This completes all the items on today's agenda.
Well, thank you. Uh our meeting adjourned, and thank everybody for, for everything that you do. Uh have a great Thursday and a great weekend coming uh up for us. And uh it wasn't as pivotal, the governor's uh comments were not as pivotal. I guess there's just three elements to it, and one is from fifty to seventy-five percent to retail. Uh the other one is nursing and, and uh homes and facilities. I did speak to um Sintron, Jacob Sintron, and it does not include visitations at uh, at hospitals. Uh it's just to the healthcare, uh nursing homes uh and extended uh facilities. Um and so I think those are the two that are very important. The elected surgery, I think, is gonna be important. Uh that's a revenue that was really needed throughout. And so it wasn't as pivotal, but I think he does show his hand that, that we're moving quickly into reopening our, our economy. I'm, I'm, I'm glad about the bar situation still being closed, not in a negative way. The only problem is that they, all the bars have gone very creative and now are restaurants. And we need to, to look at them a little closer to make sure that they're, you're not hearing uh to what the order really uh is trying to accomplish. So uh once again, uh we thank you. I'm, I'm sort of glad we didn't have, uh, at this point, we haven't seen really significant numbers coming out of Labor Day as we did in other times, but we might be surprised in the next few days. So we'll, we'll wait for that. Uh once again, thank you, and um we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at one oh one P M.